I had to check to see if it was signed. Well, actually, when she was running for president, she did her thing at the high school.
Yeah, I remember that.
I was waiting in line outside Donakem High School. What are you waiting in line for? I said, well, I'm a citizen here. Oh, it was grand, it was too full of signs. Wow. I got my picture taken.
Yeah, there were a lot of people.
Who? 22 years of service. Yeah, yeah, my mom. My kids, well, my kids were born in Berkeley, but they came home from the hospital.
Good hospital.
Yeah, it's a good hospital.
I was in Market Basket once. I was in Market Basket once in a deli and there was this so- in front of me and she looked familiar. So I said to her, I said, "Do I know you from the alumni association?" She goes, she whispers, she goes, "Oh, my God." And I go, "Excuse me?" She goes, "My husband's from Uppity Court, but I'm not." And I said, "Oh." "Dash, how old are you?" She says, "I'm 12." And I go, "You're not a cop."
For heaven to hear 82.
All right, everyone ready? All right, attention, everyone. Thank you for coming. I'd like to call this Monday, December 4th, School Committee Business Meeting to Order. Mrs. Yell, will you take the role, please?
I don't get no respect.
Will you take the role, please, Mrs. Yell?
I can do that. May you read them?
I'm here.
Sarah Hall?
Here.
Brian Callender?
Here.
Steve Cole?
Here.
Bruce Menon?
Here.
Brianna Higgins?
Here.
Juliet Walker?
Present.
Great, can we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united on, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I'd like to turn the meeting over to Vice Chair Hall.
Good evening, everyone. We're going to begin with public comment. We have four people signed up, which is a record, at least since I joined, so I'm excited. I do need to just read a couple of reminders before we begin, and then I'll call you up in the order that you signed up here. Please keep to topics within the school committee's scope of authority. We encourage civility. Be mindful of the fact that this is a public meeting, which is being livestreamed and recorded for all ages in our community. Please be aware that this is not an opportunity for discussion and that you will not receive a response at this time. You will have two minutes for your comment. Longer comments can be sent to the school committee email. So first up, we have Ralph Orlando. I'm just going to ask you to come up to the mic here. State your name and address, you know the drill.
That's correct, and I apologize, this is my first few practices with these cheer glasses on, I had my Cataracts done Wednesday. My name is Ralph Orlando, I live at 4 William Hall Drive, and I want to take this opportunity to express, I've been led to believe that this is the last school committee meeting of the year, so I'm here to express some sincere thanks and appreciation for 20 years of service, over 20 years of service and commitment to the students, teachers, and administrators of Newburyport Public Schools by two members who will be departing, Mr. Cole and Mr. Menon. During their tenure, public conversations were welcome to the benefit of our schools, and parents and community members were allowed to speak. That has no longer been the case. I was an active person in that audience for 10 years, from 2006 to 2016. From this side of the table, lots of good things happened. People brought up situations where Spanish, which was the only language taught at the elementary school levels, for six years, students came up and they were told, oh, they had to take German. That was changed. In 2006, the school district was faced with a $1.2 million loss or deficit. 22 teachers were axed. At that time, from this side of the table, someone presented a succinct presentation of Chapter 70 and a comparative community analysis that explained exactly what was going on. City Council requested that presentation be made, and through the efforts of Representative Costello, that presentation made it to the Governor Patrick's office. There were no labs and CP courses back in the early 2000s. That led to, was brought up by members sitting in the audience. That resulted in the science program that you see here today. Two periods of public comment were instituted, one at the beginning and one in the middle, so that people could comment on some of the things that were made. From this side of the table, school councils were noted to not be in existence in a while back.
That was two minutes, I want to wrap it up.
All right. And a lot of things had changed once the school councils came into effect. And so, I'd just like to thank Mr. Menon and Mr. Cole. They were part of the groups that would suspend the rules to allow for more than two minutes conversation on topics that they felt were important. These two men were valuable assets to the school, to the community, as were many people who were sitting on the other side of the table. I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Orlando. Okay, next up is Dave Hochheiser.
Hello, everyone. Sorry if it's a little loud up here, I couldn't hear a lot of what Dr. Orlando said, so I'm going to try to project a little bit. I will second my thanks to Mr. Menon and Mr. Cole for their time on the council. And I need to talk about tonight's agenda item around the Whittier Tech School. A couple things. Number one, if you don't know, there's a vote coming up in January on the Whittier Tech's school, the Whittier Tech School's future. I've said this before at meetings, I'll say it again. I think January votes are irresponsible for the idea of democracy. We know how low the turnout is in regular voting. The idea of having a January vote only guarantees that fewer, a lower percentage of people show up to vote. It breeds distrust among people, because not everybody's going to know about it. And I just find it to be democratically irresponsible. That being said, I'm going to ask the school committee for four things very quickly. Number one is to create a lot of information on this for people. People should know what service our vocational schools have at this point in 2023. They are not old-school vocational schools. They have become magnet schools in gateway cities, where the schools get to choose which students they want to allow in, based on academic performance and attendance rates. And so that in and of itself makes me question using public funding for them. They should also be made aware of what this issue looks like, the amount of money that we are being asked to put up, and why we are being asked to put up this amount of money. So I'm going to ask somebody to put out a lot of information, because it's going to need that much information for people who don't know what the issue is to even begin to understand. Number two, I know there's a letter in your packet tonight that you are sending. I'm not 100% sure who you're sending the message to, but I would like to see this committee strengthen that message. For example, in one line, it says that you want to encourage the people in charge of this, encourage the people in charge of this to look into being more fiscally responsible and transparent. I think we have to insist on that. Encouraging is just not strong enough language. Number three, I want you to consider the proposal in tonight's package from Superintendent about another path to vocational education. And number four, I would like you to think about adding an intern-specific position to the high school. Someone who could help put students into internships to offset what I'm hoping is our leaving the Whittier Tech School conglomerate altogether. Thank you.
Next up is Connie Preston.
Thank you very much, Connie Preston, 18 Atwood Street. I too would like to commend both committee members, Cole and Menon, on the many years of service that you've had with the school committee, so thank you very much. But I would like to talk on topic, on the Whittier program. So, full disclosure, I am a city councillor. And, you know, truthfully, there's been so much discussion about this, and I have yet to hear a single voice of support for the Whittier program. I want to be very clear that I understand very much the value of Whittier and vocational schools as a whole. But overwhelmingly, what I'm hearing from the community is that they feel that they are being bullied into paying an unfair amount for the new Whittier school. And so, I really hope, as a part of the discussion, we can really focus on speaking to the community as a whole about why we should feel that it's fair for the residents of Newburyport to pay a disproportionate amount for the new school costs. And as we think about that, you know, really helping the community at large to understand why this should happen. Because should this vote go through in January, and we then have to go to debt exclusion, if that does not pass, and we need to find this in our operating budget, we are ultimately going to really struggle to be able to do something like build Newburyport Youth Services a new building, which, or well, to renovate 59 Low Street for Newburyport Youth Services, which I think is an absolutely vital asset for this city. And frankly, I think it's very important for people to understand that, again, if the vote is positive for the Whittier project and the debt exclusion does not go through, and we have to keep this within our operating budget, frankly, it's going to have to come out of the school budget. There's just no way for us not to be cutting school budget to be able to go forward with this program if we don't have a debt exclusion. So I'm really hopeful that as the discussion unfolds, we can be very clear about these points and really think about the community as a whole as the discussion unfolds. Thank you.
Stacy McMillan?
Hi, I'm Stacy McMillan, 16 Highland Avenue. Thank you to committee members Cole and Menon. And I will also echo what the other two people who spoke said, and I guess, in a way, Connie, I feel like you teed me up, because I'm here as a member of the voting public, who feels like I know very little, I feel like Whittier came out of nowhere, we are being pushed into spending an obscene amount of money, without really any understanding of what the process has been to date. I'll also add, I'm not totally clear on how to get information. Ahead of the meeting at Haverhill, I emailed the entire Whittier School Committee. Six emails bounced as undeliverable, and no one responded to me. So I really would implore you to please educate the community, help us understand how we got to this point, the impact of the vote on our community, and to really drive a much more engaged process. Because today, it feels like this is being dropped on us, and we're being pushed. And I would like to be an informed voter, and I'm finding it really difficult to be one at the moment. Thank you.
All right, now we're going to move on to student and staff recognitions. Vice Chair Hall, if there are other people in the audience who wish to speak and they didn't get a chance to sign in, would it be appropriate to let them speak?
Sure. Is there anyone who?
We didn't hear any such thing.
Oh. Oh, come on up.
And are these mics on, or are they only internal to the?
They're only for the?
Okay, maybe in the future, we could make sure that, because we did that a lot. We did use to have the mics that the whole?
Yeah, we'll have to, we'll have to speak to someone about that.
Good evening. Andrea Wheatman, 183 High Street. Also add my quick commendations to the two requiring, retiring committee members. Thanks for everything that you have done. I know it's been a long time and a lot of commitment to the district. As a taxpayer, a parent of two students at the Knox Middle School, and a regular advocate for funding for the Newburyport Public Schools, I do wanted to make some comment on the potential Whittier Tech project. The financials, I first of all would like to agree with what Stacy said, that it is hard to become an educated voter on this project, and I have worked hard to do so, and I still don't feel like I really have all my questions answered. But the financials alone just don't make sense for the Newburyport community, given our many other budgetary challenges, both within the school system and outside of it. Equally important, though, is the nature of how this project has been communicated to the various stakeholders in our area communities, and the complete lack of transparency provided thus far. Similar to what Dave Hochheiser said, I have real concerns about a potential vote in January, one that seems to have been scheduled a little bit under the radar and in which hours are quite limited. January's a month where we inevitably have bad weather. How are we supposed to feel confident that our senior citizens will be able to get to the polls? There is so much important discussion being held at the city level about how we can make it more affordable for seniors to age and place in Newburyport and the community that they love. Surely scheduling a vote that would materially impact the city budget in a manner where we can all be assured, all votes will be cast and counted, is important. It does not feel like that is happening with how the current vote is scheduled to happen. More important, I just don't believe that the lion's share of voters in our community have any idea that this is going on, and if they do, it's very, very hard to get information. So I am echoing the many others who have made public comment already, and asking this committee to help us to disseminate that information. I want to be clear, I don't doubt the value that Whittier Tech and its graduates have in our community. It's important, but I just cannot support this project as it has been presented to us. For the number of students that we send, the money just doesn't seem to make sense. So I look forward to more discussion on this, both here and at the city council next week. And I am hopeful that the school committee will help disseminate what is important information for the community. Thank you very much.
I'd like to say, committee men like Cole and Menon still have to come to one more meeting, right?
We do have, we do have one more meeting, just to be clear.
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah, I think I've got an open slot on my calendar.
Good.
We just often have canceled the meeting.
We have, right.
We are not canceling it.
Good, yeah.
Good. Big plan.
Last call for public comment. All right, so now, student and staff recognition.
All right, well, thank you very much. As part of our school committee meeting beginning, we get to recognize some wonderful staff members, along with some wonderful students. And first, I think PBIS is working. Let's give them a round of applause for their behavior tonight. There's some evidence for the school committee. So Ms. Sokolowski could not be here tonight, but she wrote up a beautiful message for our community. So she says, "As a building principal, she is so proud of the Brezner Hand Green Team's staff and students. She's sad that she could not be here to honor them in person tonight, but she's so happy in getting them the recognition that they all deserve. So the Brezner Hand Green Team does so much for the school, it's hard to put in words. The students here today participate in the Clipper Course Club that go around the school in the mornings to check the recycling bins for contamination and to empty compost bins. With the composting, these students led the way to make the Brezner Hand more green, encouraging classrooms to compost, as well being peer role models in the cafeteria, as the Brezner Hand School composts together as a whole school environment, reducing the overall waste of the Brezner Hand School. They literally come to school early to take care of the trash and composting, and that is their dedication. These students also create morning announcement videos, shown school-wide, that educate staff and students that not only items going into the bins are cardboard, paper, and water bottle cans, but they also check each classroom every day, and they hold the school accountable to stay committed to recycling. Classrooms that have contamination in their recycling bins, such as food, plastic, plastic wrappers, dirty containers with food, receive, I like this, an oops slip." Yeah, I think so. Like five oops slips a year. So they know where they made their mistake. The students keep track of which classes have no contamination weekly, and they celebrate their classes with the least amount of oops slips by recognizing them in the morning announcements. The Green Team leads the way with composting and recycling, but they're also with promoting the unity and team approach that we all hear at the Brezner Hand share. They teach us that we all have an important role in the school, that every single teacher, every single student and staff member can have an important impact on the whole community. This translates beyond composting and being green. These staff and students show every day that if you take a moment to think about your own personal actions, you can choose to do something that benefits others around you, which has long-term positive effects. So we want to congratulate and thank all the Green Team members. So at this time, I'm going to call up our staff members that are here in the audience, so you're going to come on up and receive your certificate. Our first staff member is Kelly Gabarino. Our next staff member is Holly Curtis. Okay. Kitara Harding. Whitney Hussein. Kelly LeBrod. Caitlin Nickerson. Sue Simon. And Sarah Bruoa, who's not here tonight. All right. That's us, very important staff. And for our students here tonight, we really want to take one moment and just really thank them for their dedication, their leadership in setting a great example for all of us. So we expect big things from you in the future, so no pressure. So the students we're going to recognize tonight is Harper Dugan. Come on up, and you can, you're going to stay up here. So what we'll do for our parents and guardians, we're going to announce all the students, and then we'll do like a team photo after, so you'll get your photo ops with everybody. So Juliet Swift. Penelope Misa. I want to say Penelope again. Last time I got that wrong. So I've been saying Penelope, 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 Penelope.
So congratulations.
Casey Conley. Landon Scrups. Kennedy Bly. She's watching right now, so congratulations. We might bring Kennedy back for a future meeting. Morgan Rubbo. Congratulations. Hadley Coffin. Hadley. Great job. Teddy Quinn. Keegan LeBlank. Piper Yuhas. And Lucas Knapp. And I got to work with these students last year. I get, not in the Green Team, but I got to visit. And Lucas and I have an arrangement. When I'm out sick, he fills in as superintendent. All right, so at this time, we'll take a photo op and we'll take a recess.
We'll take a brief recess for congratulations.
Correct, and maybe we can go over here and take some pictures with the parents.
Awesome. All right.
Stock market game alongside preparing a portfolio with money allotted from the NEF. Last week's presenters included Stephen D. Ambrogio, Matt Hurley, Matt McDougall, and Nolan Smith. They received valuable feedback from the advisory team and exhibited a strong understanding of the language associated with finance and investment. On behalf of the club and school, we want to thank the NEF for making this experience a reality, along with all the members of the community who have taken time to offer feedback on the club to their portfolio. Before Thanksgiving break, we had one of our most spirited Color Day rallies in recent memory. Thank you to both Mayor Riordan and Superintendent Gallagher for adding to the spirit. And that is all I have. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Lizzie.
Good job.
All right, up next is our Whittier Regional Rep update. I'm going to turn it over to the mayor here.
I feel bad I have to have Brett and Donna come up after Lizzie. That was pretty awesome. Sure, if Brett and Donna want to come up to the podium, that would be great. I just don't think we're going to be able to hear you. The mic's not going to be able to hear you guys if you aren't up at a mic. So I'll set the stage a little bit before we get to Brett and Donna. Brett Murphy and Donna Holliday are two representatives on the Whittier School Committee. We have the Superintendent of Whittier Schools, Maureen Lynch, coming to a special city council meeting on Monday at 6:00 PM at City Council Chambers, if anyone is interested in coming. That's kind of a precursor to the seven o'clock meeting, but that's going to be Whittier's opportunity to talk a little bit directly to the council about the project and where they're at. And then again, it'll be an opportunity for the community to come for public comment, as well as the city council to ask questions. So I thought tonight would be a good kind of precursor to have our representatives on the Whittier School Committee come in, kind of give us their take on where we are in the process, fill in any other information that we might not know. They haven't had a meeting since November 6th was the Whittier School Committee's last meeting. Their next meeting is December 13th, where they'll vote on whether we have the special election vote on January 23rd, I believe, next month, which would go to a district-wide vote, majority vote for, with all the 11 cities and towns that feed into Whittier, on whether we move forward with this $445 or so million project. We currently have 29 kids that attend Whittier Public Schools. Our allotment of this bill would be $30 million, and we'd pay over $60 million over the life of the loan that would be taken out for that. And currently, right now, we stand at about 63% reimbursement from the MSBA. All right, so that's kind of just like the facts, I guess, as right now. Again, people, I know in public comment, people were talking about looking for information. And, believe me, I feel like I've done nothing but talk about this project for almost two months. But the city has set up a website with all pertinent information around Whittier. It's on, if you go to the city website, cityofnewreport.com, and you go on the mayor's office page on the left-hand side, you'll see a list of tabs, and one of them is the Whittier School Project. And everything that we have associated with the project, you'll see the breakdown of all the communities. You will see any kind of letters that we have sent forward. We've sent multiple letters to Whittier School Committee, to the MSBA. You actually, I think you'll actually see some other community letters. I think pretty much at this point, almost all 11 communities have sent some sort of letter either to the Whittier School Committee directly, or to the MSBA, or they're finalizing their letters this week, as I found out from a lot of them today. So I guess I'll just stop there, and I'd love to hear from Brett Murphy and Donna Holliday about, I guess, where they are with the project, what they're feeling right now, and what can they tell us, what they're hearing from maybe other members on the school committee?
First, I'd like to thank Representative Cole Menon for the 20 years of service. I myself have been off for 20 years.
Brett knows all about that.
I remember when you were like that tall.
Whittier also has a website that has a vast amount of information on it. And there's forums coming up, as the mayor mentioned, next week. We have a council meeting. There's one going on right now in Salisbury. So the information is out there.
I think Salisbury meeting's tomorrow night, I believe. They're having a meeting tomorrow night.
No, tomorrow night?
Tomorrow night, yeah.
It was in the paper today.
Yeah.
So are there any questions?
I'm sort of referring to Brett because he has been on the school building committee as part of that process, and I have been on the school committee for two months and have just been to two meetings. And I toured the school, I reviewed the information, the website. But one thing I do want to say, that I agree with you that this has definitely not been the kind of process that we used when we, as a community, came together to do a debt exclusion for the Brestahin and the Knock-Mullin School. We had a campaign, we had signs. I think everybody in the community knew what they were voting on. This has been hard. Having been an elected official, I too was sort of taken by surprise come around the summertime when information started coming out about this. I don't believe it was our community's responsibility to lead the campaign for the school. There's been numerous meetings that the superintendent has held, but this is where we are. There was an open house, they've done a public forum. I think the school committee member Callahan was there a couple weeks ago when they did a presentation at Whittier, as well as both of us were there. It's a very difficult process at this point. It's a very expensive process. My concern about not only the vote, Brett and I have talked about this, and until we have all the details about what's happened between our last meeting and the 13th next week, when we are to supposedly take the vote on the vote, any new information that has surfaced as a result of that? There was a legislative meeting, there were efforts to try and get more money for this project, because one of the things that concerns me is the fact that originally it was in the mid to high 60s, the reimbursement, but when you start taking out all the uneligible costs, legal, I mean, there's so many things that we know as a result of doing this process that aren't eligible for reimbursement. It's dropped down to like the mid 30s. So here we are now, we've dropped to 230-something is what the, after you take off the MSBA money, what the cost would be to the 11 communities, and it's based on your percentage of students. That's why, or in your school district, not who go to Whittier. But the other thing we have to think about is what we pay annually for our assessment for Whittier too, as well as what they're asking in terms of this debt exclusion. But I'm still not understanding what happens if, say, the vote goes through and we agree to do a district-wide vote, and it passes, and then the debt exclusion fails. Based on this charter, legally, what does that mean for us? Or if we decide not to vote as a district, but individually as communities, but we're still tied in by this legal charter that was built, you know, developed 40 years ago or something, then what happens to our financial commitment then? And we don't have answers to that yet. I don't anyway, in terms of feeling comfortable with the vote. I don't know if you know more about that than I do.
No, I mean, there's everything in the charter.
Mayor, do you have any information about that?
No. I mean, I've got a lot of different lawyers looking at it for a lot of different, trying to come up with options.
And I asked Whittier's lawyers to look at it too, but I don't have feedback yet. So I think we need answers to those questions before, like what is the impact of the communities after this vote, with whatever kind of vote we take.
Right. I guess I have a question, just, I know, I don't know how I want to say this. So I guess, and I don't know what you guys get to hear, right, because you haven't had a meeting since November 6th, but I do feel like there's a little bit of momentum, at least the last week, week and a half, 10 days, around pausing the vote. Like, what does that look like? And I know there's fear about losing the MSBA money, but at the same time, I think there are enough communities now that have come out publicly, they're voted by their town council or select boards, asking for a pause. Is that something you plan to hash out during your December 13th meeting?
Ask for pauses.
What's that?
You can see the list of emails for ask for pauses.
Oh, that was my next question, if you guys are hearing from anybody.
I think that a lot of communities feel like they're blindsided. I mean, elected officials might have gotten information at budget time, but in terms of the information filtering down to those who are going to be the voters, it's not, they don't have it. So we've asked Mayor Gohash, she was there that night, we asked, you know, talked to the high school principal, Chris, we've asked that there needs to be a delay, but, you know, there's, I don't know, concerns about that, that that's not really going to make a difference. But I think that there should be a delay, because we don't have answers to all of our questions, and that if we go forward on the 13th with this vote, I don't feel comfortable because I don't know what I'm voting for.
How much of a delay are you looking for?
Oh, I don't know. I mean, like, I think for cities and towns, especially without town meeting, I mean, I think the vote should at least be pushed to the, to deep spring, where it can feed into these town meetings that all these communities have. I mean, for us, it's a little different. We can really turn around a quick meeting pretty quickly and discuss things, but I think it's more difficult for the towns, and there's more, there's obviously, there's eight towns and three cities that feed into Whittier.
I'm not sure we can get beyond March, because that would be the MSBA's, because they do.
But I'd also like to hear from the MSBA, because I know they've received multiple letters about this as well, right? So I mean, and if I was them, and if I was, would be willing to put all this money towards a project, I'd be pretty concerned if eight of the communities have sent you letters asking you to either stop it, or rethink what we're trying to invest here.
Right. It would be nice if we could hear back from them right after the vote.
Yeah. And I know, I mean, I don't know how often you see the responses that Superintendent Lynch, because I think most of them are, they've asked Superintendent Lynch to respond directly back to the communities. So I don't know if she shares that with the school committee members. Does she, those letters?
We get some of that.
Some of them, okay.
Exactly what you're referring to.
All right. So I know that's somewhat the process. I guess I don't want to, if people, if school committee members have questions, I mean, I have plenty others.
Can I just say one more thing?
Sure.
Just I know that in your packet, you were talking about doing an audit, but having been at the Mass School Building Authority numerous times over the course of a couple of years while we were doing our projects, every single step of the way is identified through a process, and that there is a team of people who review everything, everything, every detail, every single piece of paper you submit, and they ask grilling questions. So I'm not sure that an audit is what you're looking for at this point. I'm not sure what that will present to you.
I can answer that.
Okay.
It was my idea.
Yes, no, I know.
Not really sure what the audit would be, other than a general project audit, and I'll bring up one of the points that was made that, at that meeting. One of the items is $11 million half-mile road.
Right.
And Owen Smith said, "Up instead of six-lane interstate highway, one mile is 14 million." So how could you be, half of that distance, a two-lane backroads path for 11?
That's just a budget estimate that was put out there at a worst-case scenario. Well, there's no plans for that, there's been no engineering, it's not even, I agree, it's a lot of money.
Okay.
No question.
Okay, well, that makes me want to do it even more, because the way all the marketing is, says, "Hey, if you guys don't vote yes for this new school, we're immediately going to have to fund a wastewater treatment plant, an $11 million access road, and all the sprinkler stuff." So you can't have it both ways.
Not necessarily the access road, but yes, the sprinkler, and yes.
Sprinkler's a, that's a given.
Okay. But you just said that the 11 million isn't really a real number.
It's a budget, it's a general, it's a budget number.
But somebody has to know what that cost is. They're not, they can't just pick that out of the air. And you bring up the road anyway, because the other night, apparently Superintendent Lynch told Amesbury that she's taken the road off of the project. But at that meeting, she said the City of Haverhill was requiring the road for safety reasons, so.
As a second.
There's a lot of not exact information happening here.
Because the City of Haverhill is governing what we've got to do with this road.
Well, which one is it, though?
I don't know. I can't tell you.
And I get it, I get it, Brett. I know it's saying you're doing this, but if someone said to me, "Hey, I heard Superintendent Gallagher's going to do ABC," and I just said, "I don't know, you know, let's have a vote about it." Forget it. Don't do that, Sean. So I guess, and I have a number of other questions, but I have a feeling that you guys are both going to actually end up saying you're unaware of what the answers are, and that's disturbing to me on many levels. I mean, the wastewater plant, you know, and I like to joke about this, and Donna knows this, I held a grade-two wastewater operator license for a number of years, ha-ha, but what it means is I know how it works, right? So I spoke to the facilities guy, and he was talking about in the presentation, the rotting-out metal tank, and I said, "Why didn't you guys replace this 20 years ago with polypropylene?" And he didn't know. He hadn't been there 20 years ago, but somebody had, and had known that the practice at the time is you can retrofit those tanks. You know, the two grinder pumps he talked about, those are $12,000. So in the five or so years they've been getting worse and worse and worse, there's not been a capital, we're talking about capital stuff tonight in our meeting, nobody at Whittier brought up a $24,000 expenditure for something that you absolutely 100% need to run the toilets? That's what is bothering me, there are so many of these instances, and nobody really has the answer. I mean, the fact that the road is now all of a sudden off of the project, and.
Why do we don't know that?
She told the Amesbury City Council that.
Yeah, I've heard that too, not from her, but again, through, and I think that's what's frustrating in all this, is that every time she speaks publicly, we walk away with more questions than any kind of answers. So I'm hoping Monday, you know, she can clear up a lot of things, but.
One clarification on that wastewater.
Sure.
We are not tied into the City of Haverhill.
No, I know that. I know, it's an independent thing.
Okay, because at one time, that was brought up, that the City of Haverhill was using our wastewater.
I told Olin Barrett that that night, that it should be a city project, same as the road.
Yeah, but it's not, it's nothing to do with the City of Haverhill. They do not use that.
It still doesn't change the question, though.
No, no, it doesn't.
Yeah, you've got a grade-six operator there who should know 10 years out what they're going to need to do for that plant.
At least four more grades than you.
Oh, yeah.
And we do have, I mean, if you go back and look at their past budgets, they're close to $700,000 dollars every year in capital costs that they put into. Part of it, they were saving for the building project, and some of it, they were putting directly into the building. So it's not like they haven't done anything over the course of years, but there is in the document that identifies all of those lines either, which I have asked for.
So you don't have that?
No.
No. Because I would love to see that, because I watched that presentation, and it was like, no one's ever changed the lights, you know, it was that, that extreme. Where is the money going that's sitting around? If we do, what's our assessment, $611,000, right?
Yeah.
Where does that go for the 30 kids? That's what I'm curious about. Anyway, but unfortunately, I feel, I have a feeling that you guys are in the dark as much as we are. I mean, you have, what, 11 meetings a year? But in between your November 1 and your next one, you don't get, I mean, we get communications from the district all the time. You guys don't receive them like we do?
So we've gotten a few.
Okay. I yield. Thank you.
Number Walker, did you want to say something?
Yeah. I, it's, we're in a tough spot, as former member Holliday knows. We have no real authority here. And frankly, the detail and things that Member Callahan has been able to scrutinize, you know, we don't directly receive this information, because we're a school committee that's responsible for the budgeting and funding of our schools in the community. So, you know, I think our concerns, I'm struggling with what our role should be here. I think asking questions is, it's great that we have this forum, it's great to know the details, but honestly, we have very limited control, as you know, over what happens here. So I'm just going to ask what may sound like a naive question, because I just don't know a lot about this project. Are you at a point, so you were on the building committee?
Correct.
How far, how detailed are the plans at this point? I mean, are they typically?
They've gone through schematic design.
Schematic designs?
Yes.
So they're not fully engineered plans?
No, they're not, not at this point.
So they're schematic designs with a cost estimate, the best you can do with schematic designs. So things like a placeholder for a road would be a reasonable assumption in that, in that point in the planning process, and I understand that. But when it is such a high cost, I can see where there is concern. But at the same time, you want to have contingencies in your, in working with the Mass School Building Authority, and I'm sure they want you to have contingencies so that you don't suddenly run out of money.
Yes.
Okay. So that's, that was all I really wanted to know.
Yes. Number Higgins.
Can you just talk about, because I heard tonight, there was a lot of people that just didn't know where to find information, or might not have understood how we got here. You know, I'm one of those people that found out about this like a month ago, and didn't know that this was kind of coming. Can you talk a little bit about the process you were involved in of, you know, when, when did you all decide, or the superintendent come to you and say, "We want to explore a new building"? Did you then have, you know, presentations from architects on like different options, different designs, probably different costs for various ones? And then how did you end up choosing this one at $450 million? And was there any engagement with this board before I was on it? Just talking about, like, these are, these are what the options are that we're looking at.
This started in 2016, and each year, we submitted an application to MSBA, and it was just '21, and we got accepted. And every year, that we met with the different towns at our yearly meetings, be it here, be it with the city council, we always mentioned that we were trying to get into the pipeline with the MSBA. There were four options for buildings. It was a renovation, and two, a renovation, a renovation addition, and then two brand-new buildings. And I can't remember the exact cost of them. They were all very similar, they were in cost. The additions and renovations, the problem with that is, it would take twice as long to do it. And the logistics of it, we would have had to move students around like 24 times, and there's even more expenses that we don't get reimbursed for, I mean, MSBA, on addition renovation.
There's a 267-page feasibility study that is posted on the Whittier website that goes through all the different design options that they did, and costs.
Brett, you were on the building committee. How many building committee meetings do you think you had since 2016?
Well, the building committee was informed in 2000.
Okay, so since you've been on the building committee, how many meetings?
Late '21 or '22.
2022. In any of those meetings, was it ever talked?
We had 13 in 2022.
Okay.
With 17 so far in 2023.
So in any of those?
They were all posted.
Yeah. All right, that's fine. But was it ever talked about in those meetings that everyone go back to your communities and update them on a project that's coming their way? And I'm not, I'm not trying to put you on the spot, I'm just asking in general, was the, what was the process? Because there was, except for coming here for budget meetings and things like that, was it ever said, like, "Hey, you know what, we probably should get out now, it's getting, it's getting serious, we should get out there and talk to people"?
We did bring it up.
At a budget city council meeting, in the, in like the 10 minutes that you get talking about?
Yeah, it's either the council or the.
But nothing specific around like the work the building committee was doing? Like, here's an update. I guess that's something I'd like to maybe see going forward after all this, is like, hopefully, you two maybe come back on a more regular basis and tell us what's going on at Whittier, because, I mean.
You're invited, I've come.
No, that's true, I get that. I mean, I just, obviously, we've definitely realized that, that maybe, you know, you should have been invited. But at the same time, I'm thinking, how could that not come up in a building meeting with 11 different communities involved, saying like, "Hey, maybe we should start paving the way for this"? You know, someone told me today, Gillette Stadium costs less than $450 million to build, which is just crazy. I know that was a few years ago now, but, but that's, yeah, but that's just crazy to think about. Gillette Stadium costs more, or less to build than the school.
You think that's $300 million for rest of the year?
Right. And then add over $400 million to that. Just like, that's just crazy. So I'm just, I'm just throwing that out there. Like, I mean, I even, you know, Maureen even met with us, you know, months ago to talk about this, but, you know, it was always talked about that there'd be this massive, like, years campaign to like, go community to community. Now, the campaign lasted two weeks, and then, you know, all the meetings were canceled, but, you know, that's all we've got, when I thought it'd be years of talking about this and advocating for funds. Like I said, I am complete support of Whittier and vocational education, and I just think, I said this when I came to your meeting, you know, a month ago, you know, if this was just approached differently, you might have 11 communities really advocating at the highest level, trying to get funds for this project, which now, we're all just trying to save our lives, you know, collectively, and that's a little, that's a little extreme. But, you know, I don't know if you came to our, or watched our finance meeting that we had last week. Unfortunately, I was sick, I couldn't be there, but Superintendent Gallagher and Ethan Manning did a great job, you know, projecting our finances for the next five years, and, you know, it's just, it's just an impossible math problem. And I just, I just wonder, once you get in there and you know that you're asking impossible things from 11 different communities, why, why isn't there more conversation or more lead-up to the asks? Because I think at the end of the day, you know that there's just, it's mathematically impossible for this to become a reality, even though we could technically do that if enough people in Haverhill come out to vote, let's say, on January 23rd, we still get that bill regardless. I mean, we'll explore every legal option possible, but.
Well, back in November of '22, we had a number. It wasn't a solide or anything, not that this was totally solide, there was 296 million back then, and that's what was presented to this house.
Yeah.
And now we're down at 267 or 265.
I'm not sure, the total number is gigantic, of course, but the big problem for Newbury Report is the amount of kids who go there, and what it costs per student for that number is. It doesn't make any sense, and you know, it's tough when doing our budgets, and, you know, eventually, someone's going to ask Sean Gallagher to cut a million dollars from the budget. And how do I say, as this role, "Sorry, kids, you know, we don't have that for you"?
Whittier doesn't make the formula.
Yeah, I know, we can blame the state as much as we'd like for that, or Chapter 70, or Chapter 90, or wherever it is, but we can blame them, but Whittier as an organization is still taking advantage of that terrible formula. They're accepting it and using it.
We're taking advantage of the MSBA money that's coming to us. All right.
Regardless, I will say, this is for more for people at home, though, but this is all based on an agreement from 1967 that formed Whittier's, right? So this wasn't a school that all these 11 communities decided to get together, and "We're going to throw in our money, and we're going to build this wonderful school for trades and get it out of our high schools." Whittier was built with state funds, not city funds, and then this agreement was entered into. And in that agreement in 1967, which has never been altered, amended, anything since then, that's where this comes from, about the enrollment and the percentage that we have to pay towards projects. So, again, I hope another result of all of this, and this is what a new letter that we're, hopefully, council president and I are going to bring to council on Monday night, it's very similar to a West Newbury letter that came out last week, but, you know, one of the things that we're looking for, besides a big pause of this vote, where the pause is not only to maybe advocate for more funding, but it's also going to give it communities a chance to reassess what our options are moving forward, instead of this short period of time, right? That's what we have to do more than anything else, I would argue. But the second part of that is, hopefully, we can revisit this agreement, either through a charter review or a commission that we put together, and really look at, you know, this, you know, really outdated agreement that was entered in by 11 communities, you know, in 1967, and see if there's ways to, you know, make it a little bit more equitable moving forward.
Does your school committee, are you able to meet more than the one time a month, if you wanted to? Does it consider it a special meeting? I mean, how, you know, there are different ways to do it. I mean, we're talking about January, maybe, do you guys have the one meeting to decide if you're going to have the January 23 community vote? Is that, so you wouldn't have time to have another one regardless, I guess?
We've been talking about this for several meetings already.
What's that? Which part?
December 13.
Right, December 13 is your next scheduled, standard scheduled meeting.
Correct.
That's next week, right?
Yep, Wednesday.
Yeah.
Um, I guess it doesn't matter, I was going to say, have another one, you know, and you mentioned being invited, but you don't have to be invited here, you can call us whenever you want and say, "I need to come talk to you guys, because this is going to directly affect you." I just wish every school committee member of the communities had done that, starting two years ago, and to come here, you know, three times a year to talk about it. Because then we wouldn't be in this awful awkward, especially for you guys, situation, right?
Is there any chance we can get legal information on the vote for the thirteenth?
I have a meeting on Wednesday. I can get you what options I have for Newbury. I mean, I'm looking at specific options for Newburyport.
Of course, of course, but it still would impact all the other communities based on how this vote goes. What does it mean? What's the impact, whether it's an individual town or, you know, district vote? And then what you do about the debt exclusion and what happens if that fails and what's the impact on the Angeles to the city?
Okay, yeah, whatever.
When you look at the capital plan that, you know, sick lieutenant is putting forward tonight, then we're talking millions of dollars that are needed for our own schools. You know, so, you know, I mean, the last thing you wanna see is for us to end up going back to oh-six where we were laying out all kinds of stuff because of, you know, the recession and or even budget cuts. I mean, I agree with you. You know, we're just trying to figure out how we can make this work and, and, you know.
Great. Remember, ma'am?
Yeah. Having visited the Whittier School a number of times, including when I brought my own kids there to decide whether they wanted it, you don't have to convince me that the school needs significant work. The thing that I don't understand, and I'm not sure that you can clarify for me, is what is the logistics of the vote? That you would vote to send the vote to the communities and on January twenty-fifth, every community votes, whether or not they support it? Is it a majority? Is it the number of persons who vote? You know, if everybody from Haverhill votes yes and everybody from Newburyport and four other communities vote no and there's more people Haverhill voting, I just don't have my arms around that.
My understanding is that if we do a district vote, it's a simple majority from all the different communities. So it would have to be a fifty-one percent.
Okay, of the total number of population. Votes cast.
And the votes cast?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And that's January twenty-third is what the vote?
From eleven AM to seven PM in all eleven communities at the same time.
So, or is it about then each of the, you know, we vote to include each community votes itself, you know, for to vote? And again, we don't, we're looking, you know, for legal answers on that before the thirteenth.
Yeah, okay. That's really helpful.
And I understand that the MSBA is reviewing the project on the thirteenth during midday.
Yes.
And that we have, depending on their vote, a hundred and twenty days to make a decision. So I thought it could have been a little more.
All of this. It would be nice if we had a little bit more time. Any other committee members have a question? I just had another one real quick. Just Brett, just because you've been on there so long, like, has there ever been talk, so in my head, like, you know, again, I don't know all the ins and outs either. But like for me, like a sprinkler system, especially in a school like Whittier is, how do they not have one, right? Like, so like, has there ever been talk in the past twenty years of approaching the districts with a twenty million dollar capital project? And, I mean, I just think that's such a much more reasonable ask for eleven communities than what we're getting asked.
It was never required when the school was built. And it hasn't been required, I shouldn't say it hasn't been, they've mentioned it many times, the City of Haverhill. But now we're at a threshold where we can't do any more work to that school without it. So that's where we are with this. As far as capital, I mean, we try not to put out a lot of capital expenses to the cities and towns. We have to with some, you know, different, over the years. But we're just at that point now where we're gonna be forced to do it. I mean, we've had other work going on. We had a chiller project.
Fairly new athletic fields too, right, that went in that, that would have to be dug up and that's where the school would go?
That school is not going anywhere near it.
Okay.
It's gonna be behind the field.
The new school will overlook the new athletic field.
Okay, so is that by taking off then? Because I know athletic, there was a big price for athletic fields that wasn't reimbursable that was being.
There's, where the school's going, there's a couple of baseball fields.
Okay.
Those will be going, that's where the new school will go. So those baseball fields will be going where the current school is.
I did have another question that I forgot to ask earlier. On the building committee, do they consider any other sites besides where it's at?
There's really no other sites. There's so much wetlands up there.
That's a different answer though. But like, were sites considered? Like, did we look at sites A, B, and C? And then all A, B, and C turned out not to, like?
There was one other area, but the elevation would have made it extremely.
I'm not talking about like right in Haverhill. I'm even talking about looking at Groveland or looking at, you know, instead of right where it is.
Building somewhere.
Right.
Not that I know of.
Ainsbury or something.
Yeah, and I think there's something, it has to be so many miles away from, like I said, there's a reason why it was built where it was built. But I'm just, I just wanted to know the process. Like, did we cancel out, you know, when we were trying to build a senior center before we even got to where it was built? You know, we had six different sites that we went through a process. I was on that committee and we kind of chipped away at all the sites and then eventually we didn't do any of them and we ended up building it here. Was there anything like that in the process? Like, oh, let's look at?
I mean, that's a huge piece of land that you need to do that project.
Sure, yeah, no, yeah.
I thought that was required as part of the MSBA process.
That you would have to have different sites. I'm just curious, just because there's eleven communities and towns. I don't know exactly where it should go, but I'm curious, I'm curious what the process was as far as getting to where we landed, right? Like, I wanna, I wanna, you know, feel good about like, hey, look, we did try, you know, we did try looking at a big plot of land in Groveland that actually has water and sewer like there that they could tap into, like, I don't know. That's why, that's why I was just curious.
Not that I know of.
Okay. Anyone else have any more questions? Let me just double check. Okay. Yeah, I really don't have any questions. I really appreciate you both coming in tonight. Like, I know originally I think Donna reached out and said, do you want Maureen Lynch here? I just wanted more of a conversation about what you two were going through, not exactly. And I've heard Maureen's spiel about the project. I mean, I get it. She's very passionate. It's, you know, I'd be fighting for my kids too. But I really wanted to know, since you two are gonna have to make a vote representative of this community, I wanted to kind of hear where you were at and give school committee members a chance to ask questions. And not because we have a say in all of this, but more just, it's another forum for people can get information. I mean, I can do a hundred mayor's quarters. I know all ten of you out there that watch them know exactly what's going on. But I'm running out of ways to tap dance and tell people about this project because I just, I know what are just a profound impact it's gonna have on our community for the next thirty years. So again, thank you, thank you for coming in.
I just want clarification, Mayor. If you go to the Whittier Tech site, is it very clear where the project information is?
Yeah, there'll be a link.
There's a link right on the homepage?
It's on the homepage. It's in gold. It's not the best font color in terms of popping.
Probably a bad choice.
I will say on the city page, we link to the, we provide the link right there.
So there's two places you can go. One's the city page, which might be a big place.
Go to the mayor's office, left-hand side, Whittier Project, School Project. And then you'll see all the letters we've written as well. But then there's also a link to the Whittier School Project site.
Did you find it, Brett?
Yeah, it's, it is, right, it's terrible type. But yeah, there's a link on the.
But also the city. Okay, thanks.
Lot of information there though, too.
Good. Awesome. Thank you.
All right, thank you both.
Thank you both for coming in tonight. It's, we're all just trying to wrap our heads around this. So I appreciate your time and your input. All right, we are moving on to the capital improvement plan review.
We're not gonna take a break for pictures.
That's right.
And I wanna note that we postponed that long enough so that Ms. Furlong could update the Apple, do the Apple update as well. That's good timing.
That's great. Now our ass don't look so bad.
It's all relative.
So at our last budget or review, school committee member Walker mentioned the capital improvement. So I kind of wanna just give an update as we're moving into this budget process, kind of where we're at, what projects have been done, what projects still remain out there. And then Steve Burcom in January and February will give an updated capital improvement plan, which will incorporate the integrated art space and some other projects. But right now, I think this is just a good overview of kind of where we're at, what we funded through a lot of the ESR funding and different funding sources. So as we move ahead, so the capital improvement for the people that are viewing, that is really pretty much run through the city council. So every year we present a capital improvement plan that's outside, you know, technically of the school budget. And this is something the city council kind of takes a look at and then approves projects or not approve projects or, you know, plans, you know, down the road for different various capital projects. Steve does his presentation, the new capital improvement plan to city council. Updates that in February and then he'll submit that around that time period. So for us, here are the projects that we've completed and then some other ones that are in the pipeline. So if we look, the elevator project, if you recall last year, the high school elevator failed. The city appropriated about the seventy thousand dollars to fund that capital improvement. The good news is the MSBA roof project that we talked about the last couple of years, so that's back online. So Steve will be submitting a proposal for the MSBA emergency roof project. And then in January, and that will be a school committee item to support that. And then that, after you all support it, it would go to city council. So we'll, Steve Burcom will be presenting that. The cost associated with that is just the design of that. So that's the phase one of that project with MSBA help. The, if you recall during COVID and after COVID, the, this is our air quality system in the Knock-Mullen. So we funded this, which tied into ESR two funds. So we utilize that. We've upgraded the, that system throughout. So that's your air conditioner, HVAC system within the Knock-Mullen school. So we've updated that. So that's been upgraded. The other piece that I've been presenting the last couple of years is our camera system upgrades. So part of ESR two and into ESR three, we've updated these camera systems, security cameras, along with the intercom system throughout. So that came out of our ESR two, ESR three funds. And then the mold, we addressed the mold member last summer. Going into the summer, there was some classrooms that were shut off and mold was built up there. So we had a company come in. So that came out of our building and grounds operation funding. And then the Presleyan playground fence was also out of building and grounds. So we funded those projects there too. So this is something that Steve is really taking great pride in, so our energy reduction. So this is utility rebate, on-bill repayment. So that is a whole system. So every time we upgrade our energy systems to be more green energy, we get rebates from the state and the federal government. So that program kind of pays for itself. So those are some projects that we've done and Steve's really headed up. He's done a great job with that. Feasibility study, so as we took the tour last year in the ground floor and looking at the integrated art space. So our NEF group, who's been, you know, phenomenal, they funded the feasibility study for the twenty-seven thousand dollars there. So we have the architects, the educational consultants worked with the teachers throughout the spring, throughout the summer. So we do have that proposal, which Steve will put into that capital improvement. And then eventually we'll be presenting that to our school committee. The Knock-Mullen tennis courts, so this is a community preservation grant, which is also part of the phase two part of that is their feasibility study and the design of that and what those will look like. And then the press box window replacement at the high school, that came out of NHS Athletics and the revolving account. So these are the updates of the different projects that we've completed, other projects that are in the process from last year moving into this year. So the next slide here, these are some of the ones, you know, it's, once again, it just shows you the projects that we cross out that are off, that very similar to what I just explained. So once again, the MSBA roof project, these are estimated costs. So if we go into the MSBA, the cost, an estimated cost of repairing and replacing the roof at the high school is three million five hundred. A Knock-Mullen roof over the auditorium and gym is right there. I'm trying to see that. It should be like one million three hundred. It's the new contacts, you know? I did get them, I got them discounted. Yeah, so I'm like, you know, trying to focus. Yeah. Yeah, that's right. I might have my daughters in. I'm not sure.
Sean, is the three and a half million, is that all city portion or is that?
That would be, that would be the, no, that would be the total cost.
The MSBA would be one of our.
Yeah, and the MSBA reimbursement, whatever that's gonna look like.
I still can't believe we didn't do the other roof at the time of all those other repairs. What's the story with that again? At the Knock?
I wasn't on building committee and I think you'll, I think you'll find that. I had some beefs with the building committee decisions back then if you're back.
Now, now it's so much more money than when we did that project, right?
This is related to the solar panels?
What?
Yeah. Okay.
There is also a zero missing. That could be on the Knock-Mullen roof.
Oh, okay.
Zero on that. That might be throwing you off.
That's a pretty good deal, a thousand thirteen hundred.
Thirteen hundred dollars.
Yeah.
I wanna get your contacts.
It's a great reimbursement rate. The, so then the other piece that Steve has presented in the past is the engineering planning, where we would hire an outside firm that would work throughout the buildings and kind of look, you know, at different aspects of what needs to be repaired and things for us to watch, having the experts come in and kind of look at that. The copper, library copper replacement, that's still unfunded. A Knock-Mullen playground repaving, that's unfunded. The kitchen equipment, working with Phil, we might be able to use our food service funds for that. So we might be able to take that one off as we move into this budget. And then, as I said, the integrated art space and the College and Career Center renovation. So basically, when we did the feasibility study for integrated arts, we, while we had the architects and the educational planners, we had them also look at other spaces while they were there. And then our Knock-Mullen sidewalks, we're probably gonna hold off on this because that might be part of the renovation with the tennis courts. And then that's that sidewalk right outside by the tennis courts where you see that.
If we build that, are you gonna tell the guys to not plow snow onto it?
I'll make sure that it'll be a non-plow area.
Slough-free.
Plow-free area. Yeah. And then the, let's see, auditorium plaster repairs is still on there along with the, so the NHS part of the roof replacement, this would also come under the MSBA for the chillers and all of that. So that would be part of that entire project.
Sean, go ahead.
Mr. Galantson? Go ahead. I just figured that we can add a question on this slide. So I see the NHS engineering planning, I think at one point we talked about maybe having it be all schools, which I see real value in. Of course, if it doesn't get funded, it doesn't help us at all. So because, you know, one of the questions I guess I have for your staff going forward is, as we're talking about some of our budget priorities, are there associated space needs? Are we really, you know, are there any needs in our classrooms and how we're allocating space? For example, if we're, you know, bringing more intervention folks in, do we need more classrooms that provide high privacy? I think some of the classrooms right now are sharing space. You know, just having some understanding of, and again, if we're longer term, bringing more students with special needs into the district, what are the needs there? So I guess just putting that, I don't need any answer from you, but putting that out there as a consideration going forward about space planning needs and connecting some of our budget asks with what we also need to do about our schools. I know many, many of our school spaces are flexible and we can adapt them with some temporary petitions and stuff. But I think just being aware of what those needs are and particularly going forward, if we're gonna see kids aging through the system, you know, making sure that we're providing the right accommodations and not being caught flat-footed, so to speak, when we need those accommodations.
Yeah, I would agree with you a hundred percent. And I think that was one of, I think, one of the benefits of doing the feasibility study for that space downstairs and bringing the educational consultants in with the architects. Because some of the images in how we can repurpose that space, it's, it's like, it's really, I guess, impressive and kind of ties into exactly what we're talking about with the portrait of a graduate. So a space that was, you know, adequate and, I guess, conducive to learning ten years ago is, right now, could be obsolete. So having, I would agree, having an engineer and architect, educational designer come in and look at the spaces. And it's not just the space, it's kind of them sitting down with the educators and kind of getting a vision of what we're trying to do first. And then they assisted us with reimagining. So when we present that, when Steve presents the, what that looks like, it's really, really impressive. Obviously, there's costs associated with that, but that's one area that we felt. The same even with the College and Career Center, you know, where like, how can we do that better and what would that look like? But part of that is the story of what are you trying to do with that space? And it's like, we wanna bring community members in, we wanna bring in, having discussions. So once they get that feedback, they do that. But I agree a hundred percent. It's almost like taking that same idea, looking at the science labs, looking at some of those spaces, yeah.
Other schools, school, you know, I think the Knock-Mullen in particular, you know, again, just even meeting current needs. Are we meeting current needs for what our teachers need to provide our students and are we meeting legal requirements? I'm sure we are, but, so I think maybe it's not as quite as involved as the, you know, integrated art space detailed look, but, you know, I just would challenge the principals to make sure that each year when this capital improvement plan comes up, they're really thinking about what their needs are in the schools and talking to their staff and saying, you know, Steve's great, but he's not necessarily know everything. So it just is part of the school improvement plan process, really thinking about what are our facility demands and do we need to then put those into some capital requests as well.
Great, yes.
Yeah. So you're saying that for MSBA, now that we're back to, that program's reopened, we can submit all three of those as, as one, not three separate projects?
Correct.
Okay, that's great.
Excuse me.
We gotta go.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Just a couple of questions. One is, I think all the schools who are represented on here except the Breznerhand cameras, are those already upgraded, so they don't, they don't need an update, or?
They're in the process, so we're focused right now on the exterior cameras. All the interior cameras are operational, but as Steve updates this moving forward, we would like to upgrade, you know, those cameras, so.
So that might be on this list.
Correct, the next, you'll see an upgraded capital improvement in February. That will include that.
One more question is, is the S R three funds already obligated, or can those be used for any of these projects?
We're, we've already obligated those, but many of the, many of these projects, we've utilized those funds for already. So, I mean, we do have some wiggle room, and that's, you know, looking at the security cameras. So we might have some leftover funds that we can add moving into next year to reduce the cost. So whatever we don't utilize in S R would probably be on a city project, like that NHS phone system, for example. So that's to be 911 compliant, so we have to upgrade that, so that, that will be a big, you know, a big cost, and hopefully the city will assist with that, so. So I just, just an update over, overall. So here you have the city, the district, and then multiple, and then grants and gifts. So the capital projects in blue of what the city has funded over the years, you know, as, you know, when you look at like '20 into '21, and '22 and '23, you can see that we've funded through multiple grants, and you can see that's where a lot of your S R funds are showing up. And then last year, we utilized once again a lot of the S R funds for these capital projects. But as we know, that, those funds are running out, and, and that's why we really focus on the one-time expenses for us. So like, an upgrade of the security cameras could be like $120,000, for example, so we utilize those funds to upgrade those. And then in the packet, this was from Steve, just on, you know, bringing up the different aspects of the roof and kind of giving people a visual of what areas need to be upgraded. So that's the Newburyport High School roof. And then Steve's favorite is the middle school solar panels, and that roof there. So those- That's right. So that was, that roof was last replaced, as you can see. So we, we feel when Steve writes the MSBA grant or submits our MSBA proposal, we're definitely within the years of the roofs to hopefully be at the top of the list. And then we'll see what the reimbursement rate's going to be. So the white roof at the high school was 1995. The other sections of the roof was 2001. And then the Knoc Molen auditorium roof, that was also in 1995, yes.
Thank you. There's generally sort of a ballpark of life expectancy for some of these projects. I just wonder how close we are to the expectancy of some of them.
So for some, I think it's 25 years for the roofing project, so you can see-
So we're living on borrowed time in the Knoc.
Correct. And Steve and his crew have done a great job, you know, every year repairing the high school roofs. Obviously, there are some leaks, but, you know, they've been doing a nice job maintaining that. But, you know, once the, you know, the addition and all of that fell through, now we can just really submit and focus on, you know, the roofing projects. So that's kind of an update of from last year to this year and moving forward. And I thought it was some great feedback by Ms. Walker, also include this to make this as part of the budget process. So this is just another addition to a lot of the information we have already presented. All right.
Thank you, were there any other questions?
Yes.
Have, it's not for a bunch of months now, but have you looked into replacements for Steve when he retires?
Yeah, we're working, we're gonna be advertising, but I know, working with the mayor and talking to the mayor, on some possibilities down the road, so. But we're ready to advertise and get the word out there for Steve's job, so.
Yeah, he's been great, I mean, I don't want to use the word Band-Aid, but he's great at-
Yeah, he has, I mean, over 20 years institutional knowledge, has been part of all these building projects. I'll tell you, the other piece that people don't, you know, obviously, he's extremely knowledgeable, but when you're working within the school system, you have to have the ability to work with, you know, teachers, parents, families, students, custodians. And Steve's demeanor and his personal relationship building with all these different stakeholders is extraordinary. So to me, that's a, that's a big aspect of this type of a job, working in schools. So it's one to have the knowledge base, which is nice, but you gotta, you know, we're a people business, you still gotta work with people. And, and Steve has been just so professional with that, so we're gonna miss him a lot.
I'll just, I'll just say one thing on that, is that the superintendent and I are gonna talk in the next few months about what that process looks like. We are discussing at the city level, I mean, again, Steve has been so great, we just, we realize what we're lacking for the rest of our city buildings as well, so. You know, and there's a lot of other municipalities that do have schools fall under a centralized facilities director-type position, and then what's that look like for the school? So, so we're gonna work on something, and we'll bring that back to the school committee and also, you know, city council about what we're trying, thinking about doing, once we have something more finalized.
Great. All right.
If you can stay right there.
I'm gonna stay right here for-
Next up is the hiring process update.
Yeah.
Do you, do you have any slides for that? I know there was nothing-
No, I don't think we do, I think we have it in the packet, but-
So everyone should have received a little handout.
Yes, that should be out there. And I just, I'm gonna be churning this over to Ms. Pam Keely, Director of Human Resources. So as we embark on, you know, as school committee knows, as we embark on this new position, not new position, filling this position, we felt it was the time to work with NESTEC, an outside agency that does this type of hiring and also hires, you know, superintendents. And so Ms. Keely has been working very closely with NESTEC, the reps. Has been doing a great job, a lot of work, you know, to make sure the process goes well and is transparent. And so what I'd like to do is turn it over to her to kind of give the school committee an update of where we're at and what the process is gonna look. Did I cover it all?
You did.
All right.
Perfect, thank you.
Hi, everyone, I'm Pam Keely, the Director of Human Resources for the Newburyport Schools, for anyone that doesn't know me. First, I would like to take an opportunity to thank both Mr. Menon and Mr. Cole for their 20 years of service, both as a parent and colleague, very much appreciated, so thank you. Okay, so as the superintendent said, I'm here to speak to the process for the Director of People's Services search and what we have done thus far and the direction that we're heading in, okay? So first of all, as he mentioned, we are partnering very closely with NESTEC to run this search. So this is really their process, and we are following their information that they are providing us with each step of the process, okay? So the first step in the process, which we've talked about with you, is we provided, as a district, a job posting, which is a job description. Those are the qualities that we are looking for in order to do the job, so all the certifications needed and all of those things. That position was then posted on school spring and was also sent out through a whole variety of resources that NESTEC has available to them, that we wouldn't as a district have available, okay? So they posted the position, and that position closes effective on December 9th. So we are still receiving applications to that posting as we speak, and the position will close December 9th. On November 15th, we held focus groups, in-person focus groups, for all key stakeholders to our process. So we invited administration to come to one focus group, parents to come to a second focus group, and staff to come to a third focus group. So to that process, we had about 10 to 12 parents that came to the evening focus group. We had six of our administrative team that will work with that position that came to the administrative focus group. We also had between six and eight teachers that were predominantly from the special education world within our school community that came to that focus group. So in tandem with the focus groups, we have run surveys. The survey was open from November 9th, and we actually extended it a couple of extra days till the 22nd of November. Through that survey, we received 126 total responses to the survey, which according to my colleague at NESTEC, Dr. Palladino, is a very, very strong response. So 52%, approximately 52% of the respondents were parents, 31% were educators, and 17% of the responses were classified as other, either occupational therapist, students, so related service providers, those kinds of people. So that's the response that we got that, or to that. From that survey and those focus groups, what NESTEC did is they then took the information and they created a candidate profile, okay? And what they did is they utilized all of the feedback to create a profile of the person that we as a school community would like to see in our future director. So they took all of the positive qualities that we were looking for, and they have now created this profile. Once they did that, NESTEC supplied us with a process to create a screening committee. We utilized their process to create a screening committee, including parents, educators, community members, and administration, okay? Tomorrow, we have announced a public meeting, which Mike was not able to be here this evening, Mike Palladino, who is our consultant, he had a conflict. So he is going to be present at the Knoc School tomorrow from 3:00 to 4:00 for a public meeting to explain the process that we have gone through thus far, including what the process was that we used for the screening committee. At 4:00, we will then adjourn to executive session, where the screening committee that has been asked to participate will discuss what the responsibilities are to be part of that screening committee. And then, once we determine that everybody can meet the full responsibilities of the committee, that committee will be publicly presented to you. And it will actually include every person that's a member of the committee, as well as what their qualifications are and why they were selected for the committee. So again, we will do that once we have their commitment tomorrow, that they are able to take part in the whole process. That is pretty much where we are at in the process. What I will say is there's multiple more steps in this process as we move forward, that it is our intention, both the superintendent and I, to continue to come and present where we are at in the process so that we maintain transparency in this process. So in your packet, what you have been provided with is the agenda for the first meeting with Mr. Palladino tomorrow, at which he will provide all of the ground rules for how that process works. In addition to that, we also provided you with the candidate profile that NESTEC created based on all of the feedback from our stakeholders within the school. So that is where we are at to this day. I thought you might be interested, so I checked with NESTEC this afternoon to see what the number was of candidates that we have as of today. And as of this afternoon, when I spoke with them, we have seven candidates for the position, which they have said is actually a solid number. You know, it's a difficult position to fill, but they are pleased with the candidates that we have, and I'm looking forward to seeing, you know, what's presented tomorrow. Any questions?
I assume all those candidates are qualified?
They are all qualified candidates, and they represent lots of different sections of the school community, as well as the community as a whole. And again, all of those, those committee members will be provided and sent to you publicly once we have a commitment from them that they can actually participate in the process. We did not want to do that until they agree that they can meet all of the requirements.
Did you say December 9th, so like five more days, that'll, it'll be open for applications?
It's open for applications until the 9th of December.
Okay, so maybe we'll get a few more.
And a question might come up, why are we meeting tomorrow? What Mike wanted to do, based on our timeframe, is he wanted to have the opportunity to go over with the committee what the requirements are, what the process is, start to generate questions, so that when that date comes on the 9th and it's closed, our next meeting will be 100% focused on who do we want to bring forward.
Great, Ms. Walker?
Thanks, Ms. Keely. Just clarification, so tomorrow's meeting is what time for the public portion?
The public portion is from 3:00 to 4:00.
Okay. Who decided the timing of that?
So the timing was originally decided by us combined with NESTEC, because the, the public portion was not going to be a case, was not going to take place until Mr. Palladino had a conflict. Because he couldn't be here, we felt we needed to provide an option, and we had already communicated with the screening committee that their portion would start at 4:00.
Okay. I, my initial reaction is that 3:00 to 4:00 p.m. on a weekday afternoon is a challenging time for a public meeting. So I don't know if people, I mean, hopefully you'll have participation, but are you gonna be recording that, or?
It's a public meeting, so yes, we will have-
No, I mean, video, video recording, not just minute taking.
Oh, providing a Zoom link?
Yeah.
We could.
Okay, I just, it's just, if it's possible, because it just seems like-
Yeah, we could do that.
And I don't know how, how urgent it is that people attend that meeting, but if, if going forward, you know, just think about participation and if people are interested in this topic, 3:00 to 4:00 might be a little bit of a challenging time of day for people to participate. Thank you for following up on the people who participate in the focus groups. I think you said about six administrators, did you say 10 parents?
Between 10 and 12 parents.
Okay, and then about six to eight parent teachers, you said?
Yeah, around six, between six and eight teachers, and then six and eight administrators.
Okay. I guess the question on that front is, it seems like kind of a low number for the teachers, maybe parents, too. I assume, did they cover the similar topics in the survey and the focus groups?
The questions were identical.
Okay.
So Mike said that many districts actually utilize the survey because it's where you get the most respondents.
Yeah, okay.
We chose to offer the public meetings so that there would be more opportunity for anyone that wanted to come.
Okay. So do you feel that you have a pretty strong, I mean, particularly, I'm thinking of the teachers, parents, too. Do you think you have a good cross-section of that, of that group represented, like, based on the numbers?
In responses to the survey?
Both, the focus group and the surveys.
Yes, I do, I feel comfortable that we do.
Okay. Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
So it just in terms, sorry, go ahead. Just in terms of the screening committee, I don't know who has been invited to that, but I would, I know that there was some interest among school committee members to have some kind of representation among school committee on the process. So if, if one of us, you know, hasn't been invited or selected, I just encourage you to think about that. And then also, you know, I know there, I don't have a whole lot of interest, history with the, with the CPAC, but I, so I don't know exactly who's been on there, but hopefully you have some representation from the CPAC, not just, I'm sure that there's parents of students with disabilities on your screening committee, but also people who are representative on the CPAC, because without that, I think it, you know, it'd be problematic if we left out that stakeholder group.
I can say that we have representation from both.
Thank you.
You're welcome. It was the intention with the committee to, to have aspects from every part of the school. So again, once we know that all of these people are committed, we will release the names publicly, and you will see that all of those things have been touched on.
Thank you. Thank you, are there any other questions? Thank you, Ms. Keely, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have the draft communication to the Whittier School Committee, I'm gonna turn it over to you, Mr. Callahan.
Thank you. I'm struggling with this letter. I remember Walker expressing concerns last week, sent an email to us all, so I wrote it as a regular letter versus a resolution with all the whereas's and all that stuff. Ms. Yell made some finesse- Ms. Yell made some finesse decisions in the language, so thank you for that, Ms. Yell. Juliet's right in that they probably would never do an audit, but, you know, the only group that is allowed to ask to have an audit is that school committee, which is kind of fox guarding the hen house. And I'm no more convinced that it's a, you know, well-communicated or verified set of numbers now, since they were here than I was at the Whittier meeting. I mean, the, the comment from Mr. Murphy about the $11 million road not being the actual number, but the way Whittier is projecting it is, you know, sky is falling, and if you don't do this, you're going to pay $11 million for an access road, is just not cool. So, I don't know if we take this, and they clearly know, they know I'm upset, so I don't know about the, us as a body, but I don't know if we do this and sign it, maybe remove the auditing thing, since we know that will never happen. I mean, and the fact that they're never really going to be able to meet before this is all due anyway is incredibly disappointing. Or, if the city of Newburyport, which I don't know if you've actually sent a letter like other towns have, sends out an official, hey...
Is that in the works?
For what?
A letter to Whittier.
We've sent multiple letters, but...
You have. Well, I'm thinking the way, the ones that Salisbury did the other day, like, we tried to get a group of communities.
So, what I'm going back with money, so we've sent multiple letters, not only to the MSBA, but also to the Whittier School Committee. But the next letter we're going to send is going to echo a little bit of what Salisbury and Westernbury has come up more recently, which is really just calling for a pause in at least this vote, and so we can either advocate for more funds, do more research, involve communities more, all of the above. That's essentially what I'm going to try to talk to council about on Monday.
So, I guess my struggle is that, do we do this as a body, or do, if people don't want to do this, because we think the city is going to take care of that, you know, general feeling from the community? And I'll write a letter myself, as a school committee member, not representing the rest of the body, because I was at that meeting, and it's ridiculous. The messaging is so way off-base, and I can't trust any of the numbers, based on what I've seen. You know, and I'm not saying that anybody's lying, but I don't think they know.
Yeah.
And having, you know, been at least as a resident when this project was done, how much more open it was, and everything was right there, but it wasn't like, oh, we're guessing at this number for something. And the fact that the superintendent took the road off of the thing when having told us that the city of Haverhill was forcing them to do it, I, I don't want to say anybody's not being honest, but I don't buy it.
I will just say, the original way that this has been presented, you know, even just a month ago, was that, you know, it's either a yes vote or a no vote. No vote, no vote triggers a whole building-wide ADA compliance project, because they singled out the access road sprinkler system and the wastewater treatment plant as triggering, both being over a certain amount of millions of dollars, triggering a whole building renovation that would be much more expensive, because MSBA wouldn't, you know, wouldn't reimburse. So, the fact that they're taking one of those out of there now, I think they've replaced it with another thing now, like, they've come up with, I can't remember what it was, but I heard from somebody else, it's like, like water sewer upgrades within the school.
Right. I mean, the result, Matt Landers, school committee member of Triton, was there in front of me, and he had a ton of information with actual numbers, saying MSBA would fund part of renos if you met specific, you know, criteria, and they really didn't have an answer. So, coming back to the agenda item, we can casually discuss it, who wants to maybe send this or not, and I won't be offended if people don't want to, or you want to have a real vote saying, no, we're not going to send that, or we just remove it from the agenda. The choices are yours.
Let's start a little informal discussion, I think.
Thank you. Vice Chair, so I didn't actually send this, my concerns to the whole committee, I shared them with Brian and the vice chair. My, basically, what I had said in my communication is, while I share the concerns, as I voiced tonight, I share the concerns about the potential impact that this is going to have on our school district, on the city budget at large, it's not just the school district that carries this burden. My struggle was with demanding the audit, because I just feel, we as a school committee don't have a formal role in that regard. It's unlikely that their school committee, as we heard tonight, is going to vote to audit themselves. It seemed, seemed a little bit adversarial. I really appreciate these, the members coming tonight, I wish they had come, they'd come more often, I hope we start opening a dialogue on a more regular basis as a result. It was nice to hear from them, honestly, and I feel like our concerns were communicated, and they were receptive, and ultimately, you know, they're going to be some of the people representing us in this, in this vote, so, and really, they're the ones who have the power at this point, besides the vote, potential vote in January. So, my concern was that, partly that, that, you know, us inserting us into this process in a, not, unclear way. I have my own concerns about audits, I think they can be beneficial in some situations and not beneficial in others, and can be a waste of money. So, I did express that I might be supportive of a communication in the form of a letter. I think, though, again, I'm struggling a little bit with, do we, is it appropriate for the school committee, or is it necessary for the school committee to send our own letter? I think we went on the record tonight, expressing some of our concerns, if the city council's going to act, or mayor, if you're going to facilitate some sort of communication that's from the city as a whole, and we could sign on to that. I think I personally would be more inclined to support something like that, because I think, again, you know, this impacts our whole budget, and we haven't said it's going to be shared 50/50 with the school, split between the school and the city budget, nobody's agreed to that, right? We don't know how this is going to be allocated, and so, I don't want to, like, give this impression suddenly that this is all going to come out of the school district budget, which I'm not saying it will be, but nothing's been determined about how we would pay for this, right? So, so that was, those are some of my concerns. And then, finally, just the resolution, to me, is just more of an opinion, and I appreciate that you adapted that to more of a communication. I think, you know, one of the members of the public mentioned, you know, this is more, maybe a little more oomph. I don't know, I don't know how you add more oomph, but I did think a resolution was a little bit squishy in terms of what, how that gets communicated to the school committee as a communication. So, I think if we are going to do something, it should be as a communication, and I'm, if we can come to some agreement about what the content is, I'm, I'm willing to sign on to it, I just, I'm not sure that the audit is, is the most effective way to communicate.
I do agree with you that our, our role in this is a bit fuzzy, as a body. I definitely agree with the spirit of the communication, and it's just a question of what's, what's going to have the best impact. It does seem like communications from the city is perhaps more appropriate.
I don't mind signing on to a city letter. I guess the one thing, I'm sorry, Bruce, had your hand up?
I did, but...
Well, the mayor did as well.
You know, we're, we're questioning what our role would be, but it's kind of funny, because we appoint these two people multiple times in some instances.
Right.
So, in some ways, they are...
That's the extent of our involvement.
I know, but it's kind of, here you go, now go do whatever you want. They're not, they're not elected officials, they, they're really have, you know, we're beholden to everybody who voted for us, and they're kind of beholden to no one, other than taking the money. I mean, it's a super weird situation. I mean, you would never get, have this whole setup nowadays, right? They would never, they would never create an entity like a Whittier or the Wakefield VOTEC. Anyway, whatever anybody else wants to, I say, Mayor, I think you had your hand up too.
Yeah, I just have a couple of thoughts. One is, I mean, this is like 93 Ed reform. They set a formula, it concretizes, and stays the same for a million years. That's a problem. That is not a problem we're going to solve here, that is a problem we can have an impact on, and I really strongly believe we should have been advocating, and we have been advocating for years to change that formula. We haven't had representatives willing to take that message into the legislature, maybe that has changed. So, there's, there's a lot of moving parts here, and that's part of the struggle. You know, on the one hand, I would have done a process differently than they've done it. On the other hand, I've lived through three building projects in my time on the school committee. They are not fun. They are, you know, no matter how hard you try to be transparent, the numbers change, attitudes change, people have agendas. In two of the school committee, in two of the projects that we've been involved with, where we had people appointed to the school building committees from the school committee, they did not reflect the decisions made by the school committee, they didn't carry those forward to those building committees. And that was, that was something that I was extraordinarily upset about. And in fact, what had been evolved was that they became the committee's representative to the schools, even though they were school committee members, and not our representative to the committee. So, so there's that kind of fuzziness. So, on the one hand, what it comes down to is this, it's my nature to try to figure out, what does it take to make it work? What's it take to make it work? How do we go forward from here? It'd be nice if the process was different, it'd be nice if the state woke up and put together a formula that makes sense in 50 years after they set the formula down. All those things are important, how do we move forward? You know, we have really nice schools here, really nice schools. That school is not a really nice school, and there are kids, we've been sending kids for years there in a building that is unpleasant to be in, and that's putting it diplomatically, because I've been there, I've been there a number of times. There's an equity issue, you know, that we're delegate, I mean, we're sending our students to a building that is not really meeting their, it's not able to meet their needs sufficiently. So, I don't, I don't argue about that, whether we should be in that arrangement with them. My understanding was always that it's almost impossible to pull out of those arrangements based on how the state has structured it. It's almost impossible. I don't recall if I, I don't know if I've got this factually, but you've got, I think you have, everybody else has to vote to let you go.
Majority vote.
Yeah, so, so that's, I mean, I...
Everyone has to...
Everybody has to vote in order for you to go. Everybody has to say yes.
Have to say yes.
Right.
By their city, by their town and city council.
And to be perfectly honest with you, if I'm sitting in Haverhill, and I see Newburyport's going to cover $30 million or close to 10% of this, I'm not going to vote to let you guys bail. So, so it's a formula that obviously has outlived its usefulness. So, so I would really support, and I've seen, some of the letters that I've seen coming around, talking about a pause, talking about sitting down, talking about wanting to support the project, and rallying people, you know, that, that to me, offers a way forward, and that is something that I would really strongly support and encourage. You know, the audit, you know, I think we need a process audit, I mean, I've been through building projects. Those numbers are all funny numbers. They're terrible numbers, they're funny numbers. A process audit would be really interesting, because there's lessons to be learned from that, but that's not what this is really going to be. It's not really going to be a process audit, it's going to be, what numbers did you use, and how did you use those numbers? So, so, I mean, I would, I would prefer to be involved in stuff that I'm going to learn from, and a process audit would be great, but at this point, let, how do we, how do we move forward in a way that doesn't shut people down, that doesn't, you know, ignore the needs of 29 of our students? I mean, I talked to, tonight before I got here, I talked to a graduate of Whittier from 1990, and I said, how was the building back then? And his response was, it had its quirks. We're talking about 1990. So, the building has not been adequate for what it's done, it's, it's, it has been able to be, been able to, you know, I was an ADA compliance officer. It's been able to slide, it's been able to slide with the fire department, it's been able to slide with the state, it's been able to slide with the feds for a lot of years. You know, deferred maintenance, I lived in the community, well, I mean, we're paying, I'm paying now for the deferred maintenance that didn't happen 20 years ago, and I was screaming, you got to take care of the sidewalks, and you got to take care of the roads. Everybody deferred maintenance, because that was the mindset. And, and I know you don't like to hear about 2.5%, but 2.5% when your fuel goes up 3% and you're only allowed to raise 2.5% in your taxes, you begin to get in a hole, and that hole gets deeper and deeper and deeper, when it comes to maintenance, and maintenance is what gets deferred. How many years, Steve, did we talk about fixing the stone wall at the high school?
I don't know, I think we're still talking about it.
Did you fix it?
So, so, you know, it, I get it, I totally get it. Where do we go from here?
If there's a mechanism for us to sign on to a city thing, as school committee members, like, sign these people...
I guess one thing we do, I mean, I do think that's the direction we're going in, is more of the letter you're talking about for, for Monday, and like I said, we've already submitted other letters, we've already received a response back from the MSBA and from, from Whittier. I guess what we could vote on is maybe giving, I mean, I'm, obviously, I'm the chair of this group, I'm going to sign it regardless, but if you wanted to vote to maybe include Vice Chair Hall to be able to sign it too, whatever that product is on Monday night, that's something that...
I'd like us all to be able to sign it.
What's that?
I'd like everybody who wants to be able to sign it. We're responsible for the budget here, which is going to be directly impacted by this project.
And that's fine, like I said, I don't think each city councilor was going to sign it, I mean, just how they should, but...
They'll defer to, yeah, council, I mean, we could empower Vice Chair to act on our behalf, I mean, it's not...
Right, I'm comfortable with that.
As long as the language says, something about the full school committee hereby signed by Vice Chair Sarah Hall, that's fine.
Sure. I mean, so I'm just saying, that, that's an option, instead of... I do think, I do think the audit question, though, should be something that I would hope specifically comes up Monday, with the Whittier superintendent talking to the city council.
I'll be there.
No, I know, I'm just saying.
Yeah, and I...
I think those are good questions that need to be answered. I mean, a lot of the questions even I asked tonight, I knew they weren't really going to have answers for, but I mean, I think it's important to know, like, what that process was, and, you know, sure, they weren't invited here, but like, no one was telling them to come here either, right? So, it's just like, there's a lot of things done, I think, behind, you know, as they say, public meetings, I mean, behind closed doors, that, that, you know, they knew they had a tough, tough ask that was going to come, and they didn't want a whole lot of leeway moving up to that.
Okay, so, what's, what is the process of just removing this from the agenda, or just nothing happens?
No, we don't remove, it's on the agenda.
I know, but I mean, just nothing...
We don't need to take a vote.
Can we, can we take a vote, though, to do what we talked about, which is empower...
It's similar, I mean, when I'm voting on this draft, we're voting to be included in a future...
Right. So, I would move to express support for Vice Chair signing a communication on our behalf, well, or indicating that the school committee, that she's signing on behalf of the whole school committee, for, to support whatever the, the outcome of your decision-making with the city council is related to Whittier VOTEC.
Second.
Make sense? Discussion?
Just, it may not be directly related to the motion, but just a reminder that the city council ultimately holds the purse strings to the budget, and I think it's important, you know, not only for the Newburyport City Council, but select boards, other city councils that are involved in, like Amesbury and Haverhill, you know, to, to really also join as much as possible. Now, the other thing that, relative to this, is the varying reimbursement rates, because I'm sure, like, Haverhill will get a higher reimbursement rate through MSBA than Newburyport does.
You mean to, for specific to the project?
Yeah.
No, the...
Well, I would check that out, because Haverhill...
It's not by, it's not by district.
But the percent from MSBA is probably higher for the city of Haverhill than it is for the city of Newburyport. You should look into that. But, but I, I think what I'm saying is, there's a real fiscal piece to this that, you know, may relate to escalating building costs. I mean, I'm not saying you shouldn't have a pause, because it sounds like that would be the prudent thing to do here, but I think you want to consider escalating building costs, and you also want to consider if there's going to be any impact on MSBA reimbursement. But it, just as example, if you look at, you know, I was looking on the MSBA website, if you look at the history of Haverhill school building projects, they're all over, all the reimbursements are over 70%. So, there may be a difference that, again, is, you know, motivating a city like Haverhill that gets a higher reimbursement to move maybe forward faster than we would, but, I mean, it's going to be a fiscal impact on, on that city too.
Two hundred million for Haverhill.
What's that?
Two hundred million for Haverhill.
I know, I know.
I just want to clarify for Ms. Yell, the, the vote, so it's more simple, is to empower Vice Chair Hall to act on the school committee's behalf in supporting a communication to the Whittier VOTEC that will be decided in conjunction with the mayor and the city council. Does that, does that help?
Do I second again?
I just clarified, I think.
Okay. I'll second the clarification.
Yep, and we're still in discussion if there are questions or yes.
Mayor, the ship has possibly already sailed on this one, but is there any room to explore or even add to our letter, a reconsideration of how the vote works, you know, the simple majority feels inequitable, because the city of Haverhill is so much larger than most of the other... is so much larger than most of the other towns and, you know, so if every member of the city of Haverhill comes out, you know, it's just gonna overwhelm everybody else. So, is it possible to explore, you know, every town gets a single vote based on their own majority or even, uh, you know, somehow creating a, a vote that is like proportional to the number of students that community sends?
Sure. So, again, this is all relates back to the Act of 1967, but when you get to this process, then this, and, and I will say, everything Whittier's doing right now is absolutely legal. Like, they are following the direction that they think is the best way to get them to their end goal, which is a brand new building. But, so it maps out, you have two options. You can do a town-by-town vote where just even if one town votes against it, kills it. Or you can do a 11 district vote, so that's why they have chosen this path.
So it can't be town-by-town majority?
It can, if that's what-
Like six to five?
They can just, but they are deciding, the, the school committee is deciding what vote's gonna be taken.
Okay, so I get it.
So my original letter to the school committee that, uh, city council signed on to was asking for a town-by-town vote, not a, not a, uh, majority vote, but, um-
Maybe we can reiterate that.
Yeah. No, we could, we could definitely restate that again in the letter, but that was the original letter, and, and a lot of that would fed into the letter that we sent, sent to the MSBA too.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? So just to clarify, the original motion here is to, um, empower me to sign on to this communication to the Whittier School Committee that'll be developed, um, at city council on Monday so that, to represent, you know, the voice of the school committee. So, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you, everyone, and thank you, thank you, Mr. Callahan, for, for bringing this forward, even though we're not going with this communication, it's, uh, I'm, I'm glad that it-
Anytime.
Yeah. And actually, it's you again, um, anything, um, for FinCom?
We did not meet, I have nothing to report.
And we're meeting next week, correct?
Yes, Thursday.
Great. Ms. Walker, um, policy update?
Yeah, just, just quickly, we have a meeting on Wednesday, um, to go over policy, uh, sections K and L, which are fairly brief. Um, yet to be determined if we're gonna have another meeting in December before I lose my only two members who are leaving the school committee and also the MASC representative who's retiring at the end of December.
Don't feel abandoned.
What are you doing over there? Poking all these people away?
So, we'll, we'll talk more on Wednesday, but at this point, we're just meeting on Wednesday. Um, we'll, yet to be determined what we're gonna do after that.
Got it, thank you. And, um, do we have an update, Mr. Callahan, from the fundraising advisory committee?
We do. Um, what day did we meet? July, we met-
The 20-
Twenty-seventh, uh, with the Boosters. Alex Corr represented them, uh, and Ms. Keely was there with some, she'd been on the Boosters at one point, so she'll, not to say. Um, it was pretty simple, very clear-cut what they do, what they don't do, where the money goes, uh, it's never, the school's not involved in any way other than the four scholarships they give, which follow the standard procedure for giving the scholarships out with superintendent and so forth. Um, the only thing I did wonder, and this was after the meeting, and I spoke to Alex Corr about this, the Boosters are allowed to use the snack shack, which is totally cool, but it's unusual because if a third party came to us and said, we wanna use a school building to sell stuff that we make a profit on, even if they then spend it on the kids, we would probably say, no way. So, no one really knew why it is what it is, and I'm gonna guess it's one of those things that a long time ago, and this would be a great Steve historical reference point, that staff of some sort manned the, um, snack shack. And then they couldn't do it, something like that, and the Booster people stepped up and said, hey, we'll do it. So I don't know if we need to codify somewhere in policy that that place is only available for the organization known as the All Sports Boosters to sell food at games, because really anybody could start asking, hey, we wanna use your building to sell food at games. There's nothing that says the Boosters are the org that we allow to do it.
I could be wrong, but I think that's pretty new. I don't remember that growing up, like, snack shop.
No.
Even like, even like really fairly new, like the past 15, 20 years, like, I think it's less than that.
I mean, 20 years is a long time.
Twenty years is fairly-
Wow! You're starting to sound like an old man!
I'm showing, that's a lot of growth right here.
That's like the 1961 New Wing at the high school.
But Steve, you know what I'm saying, like, I mean, like, you know, the Boosters were incredible, and then they still are, first of all, I'll purpose that, but it was a much different organization, Bradley Fuller and, and that was a really robust organization for a long time.
And then you had that other little section underneath the stadium too.
Right, hot chocolate and all that stuff, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Hot dogs.
Hot dogs, yep. Um, so I do think, I do think that's more of a maybe, this, this athletic director maybe, or like the last two athletic directors where, 'cause, 'cause the Boosters disappeared about, like, seven years ago, whatever it was, 10 years ago, and I think they had a resurgence. They had a resurgence, and I think that, that was one of the things they did, like, you know, food and drinks at the basketball games and the football games, like Boosters took over those things. I think that's really that new, I, I think so.
Okay, I mean, I don't know, maybe we talk about policy and talk about, I just don't know if we need to have something that says this organization gets this space.
Have you, um, do you know if the Boosters are organized as a non-profit?
They are not.
They're not.
I recommended that they do that, uh, it was, the recommendation was declined. Um, if it were me running that, I would definitely wanna incorporate somehow because you're really just somebody who has access to a bank account. You know, um, and everybody's, and I'll find people, but it's better for an organization like that to have some sort of a reporting mechanism.
The reason, the reason I was asking is that that's, that's sort of a logical way to go policy-wise, that it would need to be a non-profit.
Oh, right, right, if they're gonna do it.
So that was why I was asking.
And I don't wanna, you know, you know, cut them off in any way or anything like that.
No, I, I agree.
But I just thought about it after the fact. But that was it. Uh, the next group is the PTO, that's on the 18th, and it should be Kate Susecki and/or John Ritchie, who is the, um, budget, I guess that's his role over there, right? The budget guy for the PTO, um, and then-
December 18th?
December 18th.
Because we have a meeting on the 18th, is it?
It's at 4:30, yeah.
Gotcha, okay. All right, sounds good, thank you. Um, next up, I just have a, just a brief update on, um, our winter retreat. Thank you, everyone, for getting back to me, new members as well.
I meant to get back to you.
So we, we are set for, um, Saturday, December 6th, um, 10 to 3, put plenty of time in there, might get out before 3, we'll see. Um, but, um, we've booked the Knoc Library, that's gonna be our space, and we have two presenters coming in the morning. Um, we'll get a presentation from our school committee attorney, Michelle McNulty. Um, she did the same presentation two years ago when Ms. Walker and I were new, and it's, it's an excellent kind of overview of the roles and responsibilities of the school committee according to Mass State law. Will be an opportunity to ask questions, um, take a break for lunch, and then we have a gentleman named Tony Dent coming in. He has, um, a lot of experience, um, first as a superintendent and then also as a school committee member, so he's got both of those perspectives and has actually been working on, specifically on the relationship between the school committee and the superintendent and district with other school committees. You mentioned, what, like five or six school committees, um, and so he's-
We've had him, we've had him before.
And he's been here as well, so, um-
That's great. Just a-
Yes.
January 6th, not December 6th?
Did I say December? I'm sorry. And actually in-
I was checking my calendar.
Oh, my goodness, yeah.
How available.
That's, what, in two days?
But not January 6th.
I, I wrote in the wrong date here, so thank you, thank you very much. January 6th. Um, yeah, so he'll, he'll be working with us, um, in the afternoon, and, um, I also am going to budget in some, a little bit of time to do a, a review, discussion of our three SMART goals. Uh, and if there's, there's anything else that you'd like to see on that agenda, you can absolutely reach out to me. Probably, you know, as long as you get to me sometime in the next couple of weeks, I can, I can add things on there. So, that's it. Any, any questions?
Uh, Superintendent asked what kind of food we were gonna have at lunch.
Oh, is that, that's gonna be part of the FinCom here.
Perfect. Get that on the agenda for FinCom.
Let's, let's eliminate the pretense, it's always just that piece.
I don't know, pizza's always a good option.
Yeah.
Yeah. But-
I like the roast beef sandwiches at Pomos.
All right. FinCom agenda. Table that till FinCom, all right.
I second sandwiches. Me too. I thirded them.
What are you seconding?
I said I second sandwiches.
Sandwiches, all right. Good to know. All right, so I think we're ready for you, Superintendent.
Wonderful. I'm just gonna run up to the, really quick. All right. I just have Superintendent's report, uh, just a, a couple slides on some, uh, exciting pilot programming. But before I get started with that, I just, uh, one of the items was our, um, ad hoc advisory committee. Um, so Vice Chair Hall, we had a great, um, advisory committee, uh, with around 20, part of the advisory committee, we have 20, um, members who, that represent parents, community members, administrators. So we had a great group of around 20, and we ran through the same budget workshop that we ran for the focus groups for the parents. We got a lot of great feedback, um, Ms. Furlong and myself will pull that feedback together. And as we do our budget process, we'll be able to highlight different aspects of, um, of that. But I just wanna thank that group, it's been a great working group. We've had collaborative working sessions, um, a lot of great ideas, so I wanna thank them for that. The next piece is, I just really wanna kinda highlight, and this is kind of our strategic planning for the past five years, so this, I guess it kinda falls into place with the Whittier discussions. Um, and it was not meant to fall into place with the Whittier discussions, but it was part of the work that we've been doing, um, throughout the district. So if you recall, we've, just the program vision for this program, but just, um, to refresh, um, the community, part of our strategic planning. So as I came in as Superintendent, um, uh, there was a few aspects, uh, that we pulled out of the strategic plan. The first piece is developing, uh, dual enrollment programs, right? Um, where students while they're in high school can receive college credit, um, from, uh, either a college professor or a college program. So we've expanded that aspect, uh, at the high school, um, where students are now receiving, uh, dual enrollment credit, and I think last year, off the top of my head, it was 110 students, ranging from the freshman year all the way to the senior year. And last year, we had our first student that actually graduated with, uh, high school diploma and an associate's degree. So that's the, part of the work that we've been doing is part of the portrait of a graduate. The other area that we're focused, have been focused on is enhancing our internship program, internship opportunities for our students, ties right back to college and career readiness. So we've reported on this for the past couple of years, uh, through Mr. Smith, our college career counselor at the high school, we've expanded that all the way down to juniors and some sophomores taking opportunities of internships. The plan for the other aspect is college and career aspects, is now we're looking and we've been planning and working together, um, for really dual enrollment for the trades program, right? So not all students we know, um, want to go to college or are gonna be succeeding in college or really wanna develop a career path. So part of this, uh, pilot program that we're looking at, uh, as we have here, expand our program, uh, of studies, uh, to ensure a pathway for our portrait of a graduate and allow students to attend technical high school to graduate Newburyport. So really to develop a trade. So part of this, you gotta love Mr. Wolf, every picture, he just makes me laugh, like the most positive happy-go-lucky guy. Oh, he's here, I didn't even know you were here. Wow. It's like Fine Waldo, hey, there he is. Um, so part of, part of, uh, the program is a new dual enrollment program. So, um, this company, the Pearson School, uh, is working in some other public high schools, Woburn, also Chelsea Public Schools. Um, so part of this program is for our students, um, to, as they get into their junior year and senior year, to start to recognize that maybe they're looking for a trade tied to a pathway, and I'm gonna talk about the Pathways Grant probably at a next school committee meeting, 'cause that's also work we've been doing, uh, to tie this college and career readiness. So basically, um, for this, it prepares every student for post-secondary success, um, and you really start increasing student engagement, improve chronic absenteeism rates. So part of this, as we were moving forward and looking at dual enrollment trade school, is the guidance department at the high school had an informal meeting, we had about 15 students, junior year, junior students, um, that really expressed an interest in the trades and getting, um, you know, following that pathway, um, of being certified and getting licensed in a trade. So, part of this is how do you get there? So we partnered with a program, trade-based dual enrollment opportunities, and what's nice about the Peterson School, this isn't Whittier Tech in the sense of a student commits to a vocational program at grade nine. This is really looking for students in their junior or senior year as we develop on a pathway that decide that, you know, the trade program is a better, uh, option for me. So basically, it's built on current coursework, uh, at the high school. Uh, you meet the graduation requirements through courses that align with career skills, and then you expand the, like, for an example, expand the environmental pathway for more trade-based courses, water treatment courses, and I'll explain what that would look like in a minute. And then you build a community and student interest, uh, throughout. So what would a trade dual enrollment look like? Um, so basically, the part of the Pathways Grant is to really take the electives that we're offering along with the content coursework, and then you develop a pathway, a pathway towards college or a pathway towards a trade. So here are some of the pathways that we would be looking at, um, for the high school, and Mr. Wolf will come back and do a, a bigger presentation on this, uh, down the road. Um, but basically, we're looking at a pathway, you know, as public speaking, introduction to business, entrepreneurship, um, tied to a lot of the work that we're doing, um, in our, in our, uh, business program. So the summer before the senior year, um, the students would attend a basic trade class, trade school, and then their senior year, they would select a focus to complete the Pearson's license level courses. So where freshman and junior year, the courses would be offered, uh, at Newburyport High School, and then the senior year is when they're actually gonna be out and getting the trade, um, plumber, electrician, carpentry, there's multiple opportunities for the students. Um, so that senior year coursework, um, is where they would be doing actually, uh, the work on, uh, getting the licensure. So this is the high-end course, so some of the trades like electrical plumbing, uh, wastewater treatment, HVAC, those trades are up to $8,000 a course, but there's other trades that are a lot less depending, um, on what the student selects. Um, so students can begin a license level courses at the end of their junior year. So the assessments and certification, um, so the assessment methods include practical demonstrations, written examinations, and project evaluations, and then successful completion of the program leads to a certification acknowledging the participants' proficiency skills. And then our target audience, um, is high school students aspiring to pursue a career in the trades, including high school students seeking to enhance their existing skills in the trades. So that's just an overview, but just to kinda show you how, uh, give you a little example. So right now, um, we've, we got moved into, um, Section B of the Pathways Grant. So for the high school and, um, some of our administration, they'll be going to a couple seminars on the Pathways Grant, the second phase of that, which would be approximately which would be approximately $25,000 towards planning, scheduling, a lot of that work that's gonna go into develop a career pathway sponsored by the state. The other piece that's kind of like perfect timing for us is if we get accepted into that aspect, then we have an opportunity for a skills, um, skills-based capital grant. So basically, we would have an opportunity to apply up to $500,000 to renovate spaces to tie in to the, the trades. So that goes back when we start looking at the work in the feasibility study we did with the integrated arts, for example. That's, could be a great opportunity, great timing. So for, for example, let's say a student right now, we have dual enrollment in environmental science. And what's really nice to all of this, it ties back to your place-based education work that we're doing at the middle school. But let's just take environmental science as a pathway. So you have a, let's say, junior, freshmen, sophomores, and juniors, they're in that and they're moving into that environmental pathway. Some of them are gonna decide to get the college, you know, credits and then move into environmental science for college career. And that's the route they want to go into, an environmental science major at a local college university. Awesome. The other students that say, you know, I'm in this environmental, um, science, I'm following this pathway, but you know what? I don't, I don't think I want to go into college. I'd like to go into a trade. So that junior, same, you have two juniors, one's going the college pathway, the other one's go a trade pathway, can get their water and sewer licensure through the Pearson. So that senior year, now they have their license tied into our local, you know, Newburyport Water and Sewer that they now are marketable to work right out of high school. So that's the pilot program that we're exploring right now. And part of Mr. Wolf's budget, when he talks to his school council, you'll probably see some of that Pearson, I'm sorry, the Peterson Trade School in looking at courses. So I think what they've done, which is great at the high school, is they've identified about fifteen students that are interested in the trades. They're gonna work with them a little bit more to see what trades that they're interested in. And then we would really like to pilot this next year. So you'll have an option for students. And I think that that's like the third pillar for us of the work that we've done. We've increased dual enrollment, college career, college coursework. We have, uh, developing a comprehensive internship program. And now we're gonna be developing a dual enrollment trade program for our students. So, um, along with the hard work that we've done for the college and career pathways grant through the, through the state. So we're in that phase two of it now, and then we'll have more information. But that will, if we get accepted, that gives us the opportunity to do those capital improvements, going exactly back to what Ms. Walker was talking about. Looking at spaces, and then how can we accommodate or how can we change flexible spacing to meet the needs of our students? So that's kind of a, it's kind of an exciting Superintendent's report. And I want to thank Mr. Wolf and his team and the high school for continuing, working towards that goal, so. That's kind of where we're at, we're in the pilot aspect of that, but I think it's just gonna be another great opportunity for our students. You may have questions on that one?
Thank you for your work on this. I think it's, it's super exciting. I, I absolutely love the vision. And I have a couple of questions for you. The first question is, why, why would we want to do this instead of encouraging more of our students to go to Whittier if they're interested in the trades?
Yeah, well, I think like some, so some of our students, like coming out of middle school, going into high school, this is the pathway that they, they're saying, you know, I want to do a trade, this is, this is my pathway. And they make that decision earlier. This is an opportunity for that junior and senior, the critical years, that all of a sudden, I didn't go to Whittier. And now I'm thinking, you know what, I'd rather learn a trade. So this gives an opportunity for the upperclassmen to kind of follow that path. They may not have made that decision their freshman year, but now this is an opportunity for them, especially with the comprehensive internships. They may be out there and saying, you know, I'd rather follow this path and college is, you know, is, is not a, you know, my path. So it just gives a, I guess like a second option towards the end of their high school career.
Yep, okay.
Can I just follow up on your question before you ask your second one? So a lot of what was actually talked about at public comment by former school committee member Hawkeizer is really true about, you know, so a lot of kids don't get into Whittier. You know, this was a huge movement this year by the, the MMA, and there was a lot of mayors that gathered, you know, particularly, I would say largely led by mayors from large urban districts, but really asking for there to be some big changes on how, how kids get admitted into our vocational schools. So, and another important thing that, that relates to the project is that they're not building a new school to have more kids go there. They're actually building a school to have the exact amount of kids that they currently have go there, go there right now. So that's, you know, again, I think, I'm thinking back, I think the, the very first time I was brought to, not very first time, but I know I went to Whittier a bunch of times since I've taken office. But the first time I went where they kind of said like, hey, look, this is the direction we're going in. I think you were my first call when I stepped foot out the door, saying like, because I knew we were working on some of these pathway things. I was like, we've gotta pick up the pace a little bit on this, because what's coming down the road here very quickly is not something that's gonna be something that, that new report can participate in. And I will just say, you know, working with Mr. Smith and, and Mr. Wolf at the high school, you know, jobs around water treatment, wastewater, these jobs are gonna be so difficult, except for grade, except for grade two. But most of these jobs...
I did fail the grade four exam.
Most of these jobs are the, are the, these are the jobs that, all around the state, you know, we have just a huge amount of that workforce is in their sixties and approaching retirement. And these are the jobs that are gonna be so difficult to fill, which is why I approached Principal Wolf when I first took office about coming up with some sort of either internship pathway for kids to, you know, start, you know, start through school as, as an internship, and then it becomes a paid internship in the summer. But this is taking it a whole, whole different step, in a different direction, which I love. So, you know, I, I think we've, I think we've got to be creative, and I think this is definitely, you know, a great move for, for our kids, giving them another option.
Yeah, I, I would agree, and, and, you know, a hundred percent. And that's like the, almost like the third phase focus. We have these other two components in place. And now this, you know, this dual enrollment for the trades is something we're excited about. And it just gives students options, you know, leaving, moving forward. As we know, the, the trades, there's a shortage of, I mean, even today, you know, you, you call a plumber or an electrician, it's a few weeks before they can get out to you. So we feel like this could be a great opportunity. And plus, there's multiple others that are available. And then we can gear that towards the, the interest of our students.
Sorry, I interrupted her second question, so I was making sure...
I'm sorry.
Member Higgins gets to ask her second one.
Yeah, no, thank you. I appreciate that. I mean, I, I agree with you, and I think it's an important question to ask, you know, just, you know, why do this if we have access to Whittier? Just my second question was, in exploring this pathway with the Peterson School, did you explore the after dark programs? And does that, what was the comparison?
Which program is that?
Uh, so the, the state has an after dark vocational program. I think it's maybe chapter seventy-four, I forget, but it's essentially, you can, you can...
It's like a night school, right?
Yeah, it's nice, so it's at, you know, kids can attend their academic program at Newburyport High School. And then in the afternoon and after-school hours, you would access your local vocational schools of Whittier. And they would just take all their trade classes there, you know, from, you know, three to five or something like that.
I thought we were doing something like that already.
We've, we've had that, um, the problem, we, we've had that opportunity with Whittier, but the problem when those courses, uh, it's like an exploratory courses for like seniors. So they would go like during the, I want to say like the springtime during the school day. And then it's exploratory. So they, they would take courses like in the summertime, and then they could feel what trade they may, may like, not like. What we like about this is it's very specific, and it, it works during the operational day. So it's not a student, you know, coming to school in the, in the afternoon, I mean, in, in the day, and then has to go to a night. This Peterson School ties directly into the, the schedule for us. And then they have their own facility, they have their, you know, their mentors for the different trades. You know, right now, we're, we're gonna pilot that, we're hoping to pilot it, see how it goes. But we're always open to, you know, any other type of programs, even if there is like a, a night program that may not suit all, all of these students. There may be other students that could take advantage of that.
Yeah, I'm not super familiar with it, but I'd encourage you to just look into it, or maybe it's a guidance department that's running it, you know. And I don't know who you would have access to, but I know that the Greater Lawrence Technical School runs a lot of them, and they're pretty successful. And I don't know about like Essex Aggie, but I just wonder, like, what other options might there be?
Yeah.
If it's connected to state funding, like maybe it's free to us, I don't know.
Right, no, I think that's a, that's a great suggestion. And I would, you know, when you look at that building project that possibly could pass, I think that would be something, that should be part of, this should be a, an option. All Newburyport students should have an option to go and access that programming for free. I mean, I would think if, if a building project like that, you know, went through. But in the meantime, this is, you know, Woburn and Chelsea, our administration went out and talked to those programs, talked to the administration, and it's something that they're excited about. But I'm always open to, especially if it's free, I'm always open to that. So, any other questions on this? And I think Mr. Wolf down the road will have a more detailed presentation for school committee, especially during the budget presentations. This will also be incorporated in his budget request down the road. All right.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Do we have any new business?
I just had a, a request for future agendas. If we, if you don't object, if we could add the SISL to the subcommittee updates. It's not technically a subcommittee, it's an ad hoc of the superintendent, but Member Higgins and I do attend. And I think it'd just be nice if we just had a reminder that we could provide updates on, on what we did. I know the last one, we, we did a, we did have preliminary presentations on the school improvement plan, which was great. And hopefully, we can just make sure we get those in the packets going forward, but unless anybody objects, I just think it might be good.
No, I actually had that on my list to ask tonight, because I just was wondering what happened to that.
Yeah, so we did have, yeah, we did have a meeting. We, we, I think our first meeting this year was in October, right? Yeah, so we did have a little lag there between getting up and running, so. But yeah, well, I think typically, we've been providing like the minutes.
Yeah, we do have someone taking minutes at that.
Yeah, so maybe...
For the next one, we can...
Yeah, and I think, yeah, we can, we can coordinate with...
December eighteenth.
Yeah, make sure that happens.
That sounds good. I think last year, we had more of the assistant superintendent reports, and so that was sort of covering that content. So, we can work with...
I think in this case, it gives us an opportunity, I mean, the community, the nice thing about the SISL is it has representation from a variety of people. And if we can be the liaison with the school committee, we, we appreciate taking that role on, so.
Yeah, I prefer that. If you're gonna be on there, I'd rather hear, hear from you two about it.
Fight it, fight it out.
All right. That sounds good, Ms. Yel. Did you get that? We'll try to add that on there just routinely. Go ahead.
Thank you.
Does anyone else have any new business? Everyone's good?
I just have one.
Sure.
I, um...
I don't think I was asking you, but it's okay, throw it.
Mr. Menace, one of, I thought I would have to get him a gift, but he said in twenty years, he never saw the PTO financial report. This could be his, this could be his gift.
Save it for the next meeting?
That is wonderful.
Yeah, I have to compliment everyone else still, but yeah.
This is wonderful.
It's been twenty years.
Twenty years.
Yeah, there you go. Success.
I guess I can just leave now. This is wonderful. Thank you so much.
I just, I just had two, I just had two things. I had one, I'm pretty sure I confirmed with the city clerk today that January second will be the day that our new school committee members will be sworn in at city council chambers.
That's a Tuesday, right?
That's a Tuesday, yep. And so he'll be reaching out to each of you to, to confirm that, but I just wanted to throw that out there. And then also, and I'll reach out to Kathleen Shaw and Andy Boger individually as well. But it's also that time of year to think about committee assignments for next year. So I would say I have a pretty good idea of where I'd like people to land, but if you, I'd love to hear from each of you, your thoughts first before I, I make any decisions. So Kathleen and Andy, I'll make sure I, I reach out to you as well. You know, without, you know, the, the subcommittee curriculum that I thought we might be getting back this year, you know, it's not a whole lot of, there's no, a whole lot of pieces to move around, so. But like I said, I'd love to hear from everybody of, of where they'd like to be.
Actually, on that note, I guess one thing we had talked about at previous discussions was potentially considering a communications committee. So I don't know if that's something we'd want to talk about at the retreat. It, you know, it could have a limited purview like we've talked about before, but it was sort of, it's been talked about having that as a, another way to have community. The communications broadly, you know, could be all, all aspects of school committee communication.
I feel like that would fit in with our SMART goals discussion.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll, I'll add it on there. Thank you. Do we have anything else for new business? Can I get a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. You're welcome. I didn't do anything. It's a PTO, put it all.